All right. With that, I now call the order on our Appaquatic School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, August 11, 2020. The board is here in our boardroom, coming to you on must-see TV or YouTube. And we've got a busy agenda with a lot of things on it. Say the pledge in a moment. We have a recognition, a swearing-in, an election of new school board officers because it is the start of a new school year. We will have appointments of school board members to committees. We'll have some reports, some board comments. There is some new business, including what we're going to do starting in September in terms of schools starting. And I know we've got a lot of people tuning in, and that's probably why most of you are tuning in. But so we'll get to that. And we've got some other reports and some construction contracts. But now we'll have a personnel report. And our next meeting is currently set for Tuesday, September 8th, probably on YouTube still, although maybe someday we'll start to get to headline meetings again because I miss seeing everybody. So with that, do we have any adjustments to the agenda, Dr. Burrow?
Yes, we have. We have one adjustment to the agenda. We have a delegation tonight. We have Jennifer O'Brien, President of the Appicomic Education Association. We're going to move that delegation between items eight and item nine. So she'll be right before the reports.
Okay. And she's, we invited her to come and speak because we wanted to hear from the teachers about school opening. And so we appreciate her coming tonight. So with that, those of us here, we're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Those of you at home, feel free to stand and say it along with us. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, withverting and just as for all. And before we sit, the Appicomic community lost one of our longtime members, Valerie Jones, Rob. And so let's have a moment of silence for her. All right. Next on the agenda, we have special recognition. And as it turns out, this is going to be the last board meeting for Bob Hershey, who is retiring after 20 years. A long, long time. I made a list of all the schools that Bob has worked on over the years. There was 17. Here it is. So going back to 1997, Bob was here when Middletown High School opened. He was here for Appicomic Early Childhood Center. He was here for Olive B. Lawson's Elementary, St. Mel Elementary, Cedar Lane Early Childhood Center, Alfred G. Waters Middle School, Appicomic High School, Towns End Early Childhood Center, Bunker Hill Elementary, Spring Meadow Early Childhood Center, Old State Elementary, Norwood Grove Elementary, Odessa High School, which is going to be opening before the end of the month, so it comes in before he retires. And Campbell's Bridge Middle School will also be opening before the end of the month. So it's a very impressive list. And I think that Bob's probably been responsible for more schools being constructed in the last 20 years than perhaps all our school district brethren to the north of us. Obviously, we've had a lot of growth that's been driving that. But he's done a tremendous job. I think, you know, as we've said at many meetings, these projects have always come in on time. They've always come in on budget. And so there are some very big shoes that we've filled. And so we've got a few lovely parting gifts as the Sam features on TV. And I'll let Matt Burrows take over now.
So we're going to start, um, Eve Burnett now, next. Now, we're going to get, we have Bethany Hall Long. She's here to read a proclamation to Bob. So if we could get her from across the room, and then I'll get into.
You can probably hear me.
We can hear you.
All right. You want to start my video? All right. Hi, Bob. Long time no talk. We were speaking yesterday. I guess I'm going to have to call that Walton guy, right? Wow. I am so thrilled to be here. And you're going to have a few other awesome, incredible local legislators who are going to compliment you. And I'm just thankful to the board and to President and to each of the members. I have to say thank you for what you do every day for our children. And Bob Hershey, I'm not going to talk long. I know our superintendent, Burrows, adjusted the schedule. But Governor Carney and I just want to say a big thank you. I am not going to read word for word a tribute that was prepared, a proclamation by Governor Carney and myself and signed. But I'll give you a few highlights because you have a few other special guests who are going to also be sharing with you some of their special thoughts. And when you think about that, to the President of the Board, when he read those lists of schools, you're right, you have been a part of more construction than anyone. And, you know, the children and the parents have so benefited by having really remarkable facilities. And I know, Bob, you're modest, you're probably blushing, you want to go off to Montana and fish. You really, I know don't like this, but I want you to embellish in this that very few men can fill the shoes in what you've done. And I truly say that from the bottom of my heart. I won't share how many times you've helped me when I was a state rep or a senator or a mom trying to get in and out of a parking lot or a facility. You've done it all. I've seen you out with the vest on. I've seen you in a hard hat. You know what? You know what? I know you've been behind the scenes with every kind of shovel, device. And so thank you for rolling up your sleeves, but mostly giving your heart and sharing your wonderful family with the Middletown community. So to your family, I know they're ready for your next portion of your life. And so we have a tribute that I promised to be quick, and I'm not going to read it all, but it really does. And I had to get these readers recently. That kind of stinks. But I want you to know that in front of you, they'll hand to you a tribute that was prepared by Governor John Carney and myself, Bethany Hall Long, Lieutenant Governor, complimenting you on your 20 years of awesome service through the Appicomic School District. And the others, I'm sure, are going to get into some of the details about all 14 new schools and the thousands of children whose lives you've impacted. But I always brag on Appicomic. And Bob, you've been there behind the scenes. We have the best, the safest, the most engaging schools. And again, it's come from your tenacious dedication, your hard work, and going through tough times when we didn't have enough money. And to all the parents and individuals who are listening in tonight, we want to thank you. Everybody wants to move to the Appo district. And sir, you are right in the center. And so thank you on behalf of Governor Carney and I. And it is officially signed by our governor, presented to you this day, sir, on the 11th of August of 2020. And it is signed by the order of the Governor, John C. Carney, and myself, Bethany Hall Long. So I wish you well. We know where you are. I hope you do get to go fishing in Montana, but don't go far. And thank you for letting me be here this evening. I know when we talked yesterday, when I was panicking about having trash waste dumpsters, you didn't know that we'd see each other tonight. But thank you, Bob, from the bottom of my heart. And on behalf of Governor Carney, thank you for what you've done for our state.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Senator Stephanie Hansen.
I'm going to put this on your, careful of the court. I want to make an order on Trump. Excellent.
Are we here? Okay. Very good. Oh, I'm, I'm, I wish I could be there to present this to you in person. I, you know, so much of the Appicomic School District's great reputation is as a result of the work that Bob Hershey has done. Building beautiful, tremendous schools on budget, under budget, on time, and even before time, you know, before that they were due. I mean, that's the, it's the type of professionalism and, and, and work and dedication that really makes a community so proud of their school district. And that's what we have right now. I mean, the Appicomic School District makes everyone proud. And Bob, you're a tremendous, a tremendous part of that. And, you know, I'm, I'm disappointed to see you go, you know, as Bethany is as well, you know, Bethany mentioned. In fact, I was with Bethany yesterday when she got the news that you were going to be retiring. In fact, unfortunately, I was the one giving her the news. And I thought that she was, she was going to have a, have a stroke because she was very unhappy about that, as, as, as we all are. But you, you very much deserve it, a vacation, retirement, you know, enjoy your family, enjoy Montana and fishing. So I will read, I will read this, the tribute that we have from the Senate. It's short. Be it hereby known to all that the Senate of the 150th General Assembly joins Senators Stephanie Hansen, Bruce C. Ennis, and Nicole Poor in commending Bob Hershey. The Senate commends Mr. Hershey for his 22 years of dedicated service to the Appicomic School District. As the manager of construction projects, Bob has overseen the construction of 13 new schools and 10 major renovations, all within budget. Bob Hershey has been a model for his colleagues and inspiration to the school community and a leader in the 21st century school construction. Through his dedicated efforts, numerous young lives have been touched and enriched. Mr. Hershey's positive and worthy impact is beyond measure. The sponsors find it most fitting that he be recognized as an exemplary citizen of the first state. With congratulations and best wishes for continued success, the Senate directs this tribute presented Tuesday, the 11th of August, 2020. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate, you know, all of the senators and people that I've worked with over the years down there that have helped the district and helped us when we needed it the most. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Now we have Representative, Representative Kevin Hensley. So we're going to pause on Representative Hensley, and we have County Councilman Dave
Okay, looks like I'm live. Well, congratulations, Bob. I, I was impressed as, as you know, I've only been in offices for two years, but I moved into the district about the time you started. I start got down here in 1998. And it's just been really, truly impressive to see us roll with all the growth and the wonderful school district that has emerged. We have a tribute as well from County Council that just recognizes all of your accomplishments. I'm not going to read it. I'm not gonna read it word for word, but it really extends our sincere appreciation and gratitude for all of it. As you know, the county approves a lot of development and the school district has done it just an incredible job to keep up with that and to do that. And it's tough in a group like this. But on a more personal note, having watched this for twenty years as somebody who has struggled along with everybody else through all these referendums, your work, being able to get these done on time, on budget, has done something really important in terms of building the public trust in the school district to allow us to be able to get that done and to build what I believe is the best school district. As you may or may not know, I teach at the University of Delaware. And I can tell you, when my freshmen come in, I can tell students from Appaquodomic School District, they are prepared. And a large part of that is the facilities and, and the other activities that we have here. So I just wanted to reiterate what you've already heard and just thank you for all your dedication. I hope that Matt and others have done a lot to harvest all that institutional knowledge you have so that we can keep on track. And while I hope you do enjoy your time and maybe go to Montana and fish, I hope you still have a cell phone so that if we come up with some issues here and Matt needs to work through them, they can get ahold of you and get that guidance. So on behalf of all the County Council, I just wanted to share the tribute and thank you for all your dedication and exceptional service to the community of Appaquodomic. It's just been wonderful and you've been a big part of making one of the best, if not the best, school district in the state. But thank you.
Now we have Jerry Darney and Chris Mccone from EDIS.
This is your laptop. Did you do this?
Hope you guys are singing or something. Jerry, you're live.
No, no.
Okay. Students, they're there. We do have a few additional gifts for Bob. We have, we have the turf from all three of our football fields. So we have Middletown High, which was the first one, Appaquodomic High, and the new Odessa High.
That's cool.
Yeah, that's really cool.
Thank you very much.
Let's end it for me.
Yeah, that's really cool.
Yeah. Thank you very much for all that you've done. You know, you know me, I always wanted, I'm always like, can you go to the football field? Can we get the gym? And I appreciate you listening to me getting all the sports wheels up.
I'm gonna share your finished field tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have a brick box engraved and Michelle will read that.
It says, fourteen new schools, ten major renovations, twenty years of excellence. To Bob Hershey, Appaquodomic's master builder.
Thank you. That's cool. And Bob, morning. A little plaque for you. Oh, it's a book. Yeah, it's a book of all the schools you've built. So you can't sleep at night, you can flip through and. Could you use a glass? And then I got to prove. So then we also have, Kelly, let me give you a gray hammer.
It's clear as to which one, because they're all wrapped.
My little just broke. So you're gonna get the, also, you're gonna get a hammer award, which is for Bob the builder. And the other one's a surprise because I'm not sure what's in that box. So then we also have, we also have the, all the administrators and the school board came together. I know Cabela's is your favorite store.
Absolutely.
So we've collected seven hundred and thirty dollars of gift cards. So you can have your cornax Cabela's. So Bob has had twenty years. I've had the opportunity to work with Bob for half of those years, actually as superintendent for Tenno and then also as a principal for three. Bob was, as a new superintendent, he was very helpful on the construction side because I really did have a lot of particular knowledge or parts that a superintendent school, they really don't teach you a lot about building. So he's been a friend, he's been a colleague. And I know that Dave said, hopefully you've been getting a lot of knowledge from Bob all this time. Bob's been very gracious and understanding, even from the smallest details. But I'll say one thing about Bob, you always know that he had the best interest of the Appaquodomic School District and the kids that are in any project, represented us well, was an advocate for the district. You know, construction is not an easy thing. You know, you think you pass a referendum, it's all easy from there. Really, that's when the fun just starts and there's little hurdles and opportunities and challenges as we go about. Bob has masterfully navigated that over the last twenty years. He's truly gonna be missed. I know he's only gonna be a phone call away, but we'll definitely miss him and just all he brings to the district. And it's not just the construction side. For a long time, he served on the cabinet, gave, had a lot of input and things like that, ideas and suggestions, probably one of the most creative people I've had an opportunity to work with in my career. So just a big thank you, Bob. You'll be really missed. And I'm not gonna get teary eyed, but I, I know that there's a room, a spare room in my house, so anytime you need someplace, definitely we'll make the Bob Hershey groups. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, buddy. Thank you. Yes. Okay, read us out. So your tribute says, this is from House Representative. Be it hereby known to all the House of Representatives acknowledges Bob Hershey on this occasion of his retirement from the Appaquodomic School District. We proudly recognize this outstanding individual and applaud his twenty-two years of dedicated service to the Appaquodomic School District community. Mr. Hershey has played an important role in the twenty-first century school construction, school renovations, and supervising the daily upkeep of, upkeep of the district facilities. Throughout his tenure, he has overseen the construction of fourteen new schools and ten expansions renovation projects. He's been associated with seven successful educational referendums, and a total investment for the new school and renovation project is overseen at eight hundred and fifteen million dollars. Commanded his remarkable, remarkable contributions to the Appaquodomic School District. Best wishes for an enjoyable retirement. The House of Representatives extends congratulations and directs this tribute presented on this eleventh day of August, signed by the Speaker of the House, Peter S. Forsen, Richard L. Puffer, Chief Clerk of the House, Representative Kevin Hensley, sponsor, and Representative S. Quinn Johnson the Fourth. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
All right, well, it was all very well deserved. And for those of you who are watching on small screens and not getting the benefit of full color, I mean, that's probably the reddest I've ever seen. Sorry, I shouldn't be blushing. So next on the agenda, it's that time of year when we get to swear in a board member. Michelle Wall won reelection at the election in July. And so we are going to swear her in now, and then we'll invite a few remarks from her. And her family is here. So we've got a five.
Right, right, Senator.
All right, so reach your right hand if you want anyone to vote. All right. So keep after me, I'm Michelle Wall.
I'm Michelle Wall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the state of Delaware.
The Constitution of the state of Delaware.
And the laws of Delaware governing public education.
And the laws of Delaware governing public education.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
School board member.
Of school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I do further solemnly swear.
And I do further solemnly swear.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered or promised to pay.
Offered or promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Or offered to or promised to contribute.
Or offered to or promised to contribute.
Any money.
Any money.
Or other valuable thing.
Or other valuable thing.
As consideration or reward.
As consideration or reward.
For the giving or withholding of a bill.
For the giving or withholding of a bill.
At the election at which I was elected to set office.
At the election at which I was elected to set office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Bob. Thank you.
So I know Michelle will have some things to say and forward comments, but since you were just sworn in, I don't know if you want to make any special remarks now.
I'm gonna say that. So we can get the show on the road.
All right, nothing wrong with that at all. Next to the agenda, we have the collection of new school board officers. Each year, the board elects a president, a vice president, and a secretary. So with that, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to elect the president of the twenty 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 year school year. Richard Forston for president, Michelle Wall for vice president, Matt Burrows for executive secretary. Second.
Motion by Ms. Wright, second by Ms. Edlin to elect Richard Forston as board president, Michelle Wall as board vice president, and Matt Burrows as executive vice, as executive secretary. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, well, thank you very much. Next, we have on the agenda appointment of school board members to committees. Again, this is something that we do every year. For those of you watching at home, there are a number of different committees that school board members serve on or serve as alternates for. And that includes, for example, members of the Delaware School Boards Association. And so that has an executive committee and it has a legislative committee. We also have a financial committee that a board member is a representative to. And so with that, the chair will entertain the motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we maintain the standing commitments to the committee seats as the previous year. Would you like me to read this?
Sure.
The Delaware School Boards Association representative is Kelly Wright, the alternate Nora Abrams. The legislative committee to the Delaware School Board Association, Representative Michelle Wall, alternate Charlie Seedlin. Three, the advisory board to the state board of education, Representative Charlie Seedlin, alternate Kelly Wright. The Newcastle County combined boards, Representative Richard Forston, alternate Michelle Wall. Financial advisory council, Representative Nora Abrams, alternate Richard Forston. A second.
Motion by Ms. Wall, second by Ms. Wright to have essentially the same positions that the five of us had last year. And it's, it's interesting, of course, there are five positions and there's five of us. So each of us gets to serve as the representative and each of us gets to serve as an alternate to one of the committees. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda, we reached out and invited Jennifer O'Brien to come and speak to us. As I mentioned earlier, later on on the agenda, we're gonna be talking about school openings. So, but it might be helpful to hear from the representative of teachers. Is she on the line?
I am.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jennifer O'Brien, and I represent the teachers in the Appaquodomic School District as the president of the Appaquodomic Education Association. To the board, none of us envies you tonight. Everyone listening right now knows you have a tough choice to make as the decision on how to reopen our schools has been placed in your hands. To the district, we know you are tasked with providing a framework to implement the board's decision, a challenging task it will be. To the community, we value our partnership with you above all else. We thank you for tirelessly supporting us as we make our way through a chapter of your child's education we hope will soon close. In mid-July, the AEA conducted a survey of our teachers in which we asked them to simply answer the question, hybrid or remote to start the school year? Seventy percent of the almost five hundred respondents indicated that the remote option is the one they feel comfortable with at this time. Therefore, based on that data, I'm asking you tonight to begin the first six, first six weeks of school remotely. When we do return, we ask that a plan to address the following be implemented. Distancing, deterrence of the virus, deep cleaning, and detection on each campus. We want assurances of safety, and we look forward to the day when we can be normal again. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for coming. And I should say, we'll say this again later, but we've heard from a lot of number, a large number of people in the community, including many teachers. And, you know, I, I certainly read every single email I got, and I appreciate your taking the time tonight and I've talked for tonight. So I found all the input we got to be very helpful. With that, we will move on to reports. And first up is our superintendent, Dr. Burrows.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This is usually the time of year where we're talking about student, our student population growing and just what our human resources department has been doing. So we're currently have filled one hundred and seventy-two positions this year. We currently have opened about fifty positions total across the district, twenty-five of those being teachers, and then seventeen of those being paraprofessionals with a few other positions that are open. I do want to implore, if you know someone's new to the community and is looking to send their student to school, for them to please go online and register. We put information out there. It's important for us to have the staffing that we need for your student. And we're getting close to school starting. So currently, we're sixty-seven students over where we were on September thirtieth last year. We are seeing a decrease in kindergarten students enrolled at this point than we previously have. So it is important that you can, if you have a kindergartner, if you have a neighbor has a kindergartner, please encourage them to get enrolled. I will say, these next three weeks are usually our prime time for enrollments. We usually enroll about a hundred to a hundred and fifty kids a week the last few years during this time. So we do encourage you to please get out there and enroll. Unit count wise, we have not been able to, usually I give a report because the board has to vote on class size waivers. We have not been able to make home room lists yet at this point because there's an issue with the unit count system down at DOE. I did reach out to the Secretary of Education, and she's working on that. But we're, we're sixty units under where we were last year just because the system is off. So it's making it difficult for us with scheduling and hiring at this point. So we are working on that with DOE, but we really need that to be right so we can get a clear picture of the teachers that we earn and have. We have an estimate on that, but I need to get that official count. We will, at some point, need bus drivers. We will need substitutes. We are encouraging people to please apply and to please get your CDL if you're wanting to be a bus driver as we look to get kids to school. And so we're, we're gonna get a construction update here in just a minute for Mr. Hershey. We did have a little storm damage to our. Uh, we did have a little, uh, storm damage to our facilities from the storm that went through here. Um, our thoughts and prayers are for the families that sustained, uh, some serious, uh, facilities damaged at their homes and have been displaced. As a district, we have reached out to families and if you know a family that needs, or needs some resources, we're here to help and provide them and help them find housing and, uh, storage for stuff that they need from, need from their house. So at this time, I will, uh, turn it back over to Ms. Forston.
Mr. Hershey, are you gonna give us the construction update?
Yes. Construction update for the, uh, Fairview Campus project. Clicker's table.
Next.
Next slide Bob.
Next slide Bob, go on.
So first, you just indulged me for a second. I just want to thank the school district for, you know, taking a chance on a blue collar guy 20 years ago. And, um, just to avail me the opportunity to spend 20 years here. I appreciate it. So.
It was a good gamble.
And I wear my Midtown High School shirt because 1996 was the first project I went on to, uh, Midtown High School. You know, it's providence from there. I'm a big believer in the hand of God. He certainly had his name.
Got some photos for us?
I do. Uh, we're gonna start off over. Okay, so we're gonna start off over at the, uh, Fairview Campus. Basically, we start out with this and have it for the last, uh, couple of years. So as you can see, in the, uh, green area of the campus now, that the Performing Arts Center sidewalk, most of the equipment has been removed. They've actually begun to pave that, uh, center green section. Uh, you can see the spoke wheel of the concrete and, uh, in the center's lab there, uh, within, well, I'm assuming once, uh, students return, they will, uh, that's where the time capsule is gonna be located. So I'm sure there'll be a ceremony at that point in time. Um, as I said, you see the concrete sidewalks have been completed. Still a little work going on. All this area, it's our intention to sod that before the start of school. Uh, Performing Arts Center entrance off of the green. Uh, we did, and I informed the board, it's, we, uh, had a little bit of damage to the fly loft that you see there for the auditorium. Uh, wind caught a couple of corners of the metal panels, but we'll have that, uh, fixed relatively quickly. Damage over there to school site was relatively minimal from the storm last week. And then again, the entrance to, uh, Camp Well Bridge. Swing around behind, this is the area right there in the green where the preschool center would be located. You see the sidewalk that goes into the school. That's where the playground will be located, that preschool once, uh, they go through the RFP process and, and, uh, contract at some point. Uh, parking lots, rear of the schools, student parking lot, and it's at the gym. This would be one of the primary parking lots for any school events in the gym. Uh, graduations, games, the whole nine yards. And then in the rear tennis courts, you can actually see, I talked to the board a little bit about tennis court damage, but, um, this was just a chain link fence. The force of the wind was enough to bend that upper left-hand corner and you can see the little, uh, black treading down. That's the, uh, that's the wired fence of the chain link fence of the tennis courts themselves. So the turf field is being completed. It was completed today. I'm gonna be over there tomorrow for the final inspection of that. Uh, commencing right after that, um, the eight-lane track will be down and it's anticipated that the entire track and infield areas on each end will be completed by the end of the month. Um, the Performing Arts Center, this is looking to the rear entrance from the, uh, turf field side. Trazz and floors are down. You can see the lights up above. Uh, still some, uh, wood and earwork going on at the main entrance right in this area. Uh, this is coming up that entrance handicap, uh, ramp to the right and then you would come up those stairs into the common space entrance to the, uh, Performing Arts Center is on your left or into the theater. And then the, uh, middle school cafeteria would be located underneath of those columns to your right. But would also extend out into that commons area. This all, this, these are the two main entrances into the theater. Again, the black that you see will all be platted, the same wood paneling that you see on the doors and the canopy above. Like going into the theater, seats have been completed at this time. Uh, all woodworks installed. They're actually working on just the, uh, woodwork tops at the, um, at the, uh, box seats. This is the, uh, middle school cafeteria. Tables will be set up in here and then extend out to the commons. The, uh, square arches you see to the right are the, uh, entrances into the scattered kitchen. These are those serving areas within the kitchen. So there'd be different stations here, you know, unlike any of our other cafeterias where you have kind of a cattage thing. These are ones where kids will come up to a sandwich station or pizza or, you know, whatever. You know, different, uh, food groups are served at each one of those stations. Uh, kitchen received its Department of Health, uh, certification and, and last week. So this is part of that. And as you're aware, there's one kitchen that serves both the high school cafeteria that's on one side of it and then the, uh, middle school cafeteria on the other. Very large kitchen. This is the, uh, scattered kitchen entrance on the, uh, high school side. Um, these are some of those columns that I talked to you about earlier. We, because of the COVID circumstance, it seems like a lot of metal applications, lockers, uh, column covers, these types of things, anything metal seen to, the factories and where they were produced were pretty much shut down over this time period. So these things are late arriving and, uh, it'll be right up to the last minute till they get installed. This is the, uh, high school cafeteria looking out onto the courtyard. And then the culinary kitchen, which is the teaching kitchen for the kids, it also received its Department of Health, um, certification. So it can be utilized. Uh, this is actually the waiting area into the counseling, uh, services of the high school. Just some of the office furniture, some of the, um, you know, breakout room furnitures, conference rooms. Main stairwell of the high school, same thing, column covers. We still have some woodwork flating to go underneath of those seating areas that you see. Uh, upstairs of that area, railings are in, or trazz and floors are done. Uh, some of the high school classrooms, they're completed actually, uh, today or tomorrow. They will complete moving the Silver Lake Elementary School teachers', um, personal items from Old State Elementary into Camp Well Bridge. And then they will begin to move the Meredith Middle School teachers' items into the high school by the end of the week. Uh, one of the science labs of the high school. This is, uh, one of the design labs, one of the computer design labs. This is a trazza logo that's up above. You see the fly bridge that comes from the, uh, second level of the high school and it comes across and enters the gym at the, uh, upper level of the gym. So you would come through those doors and then step through, you know, into the gym area. Uh, middle school main office entrance, reception area. Uh, main stairs looking back towards the bus doors. This is the main stair of the, uh, middle school. Carter in the middle school. One of the pod areas of the middle school. Classroom in the middle school. Business lab in the middle school. So that's it for me and.
Yeah, click for feet.
Yep. Peace turn.
Yeah, click for more.
Good evening. Next slide, Bob.
See you guys.
Is, is an overview of Meredith right now. Right now, what you see there, the, uh, the library on the, uh, left hand or right-hand side, that's probably two-thirds of the way down. And the gymnasium on the, uh, left is completely demolished. The site work in the back that goes towards the Cav Stadium, all the stone is down for that. They're getting ready for base layer paving and the curbing is in. Don't see that there, but that's been completed. The loop road that's gonna go around the back and in front of the Cav Stadium that'll service the APC when that comes back online. On the, uh, over by the library where that's demoed by two-thirds, there's gonna be an entrance there, which is what we hope to use to service the APC so they don't, uh, don't have to be in the construction site. Next slide, Bob. There's an overview. What you're seeing there is the maintenance building has been demoed. All that's gone and two-thirds of that library is gone as well. It's a little, not, not really clear as to what's done right now, but that's the overall site look. That side. Another view of the maintenance building demoed out. Next slide. There's the site work and that's, that's, that area is really probably 60% complete. With, with what you're seeing right now, not indicative of what's on the site, but moving along well. Next slide. There's a little bit of the demolition going on. They're starting to take down the library wing, pulling it down. Doing a really good job keeping the dust down. Things are going real good in that front. Next slide. More of the demolition. That's on the gym side. They're taking down the connector between the 2002 addition and the, and the gym. Next slide. While the interior demolition was done prior to them taking down the exterior, lights, ceilings, everything like that were pulled out. Next slide. That's gone. Gym floor, everything that is there that you see has been demoed. Next slide. We'll move the Silver Lake. Your real sight view of that off the left on, uh, Catherine Street, that dry pond has all been put in. And right next to the entrance coming in off of Cochrane Street, that buyer retention area, that's all in. The gymnasium itself, where you see on the, uh, left-hand side of the school, that's all, that, that pad's poured and, and was completed yesterday. So that's going well. And the school addition in the back, all the underground is going in there and they're looking to pour that pad relatively soon. All the white that you see in the middle, that's all been demoed out and that's all wide open now for the new addition and they're gonna put the courtyard right in that location. Excellent. There again, that's a classroom addition with the foundation walls coming up. That's all been completed at this point and the underground's going in. Excellent. More of that same, back on the backside of the baseball field. That's actually the gym. There's the interior demolition. Um, that's, that's, most of the duck work and the, uh, interior materials have all been pulled out at this point. They're shoring things up to start demoing the exterior wall for the courtyard. Excellent. And where that same interior demolition, a, a lot of that's been completed at this point. Next slide. Still the same thing, just demolition. Brick Mill, uh, Elementary School bid out. We're in the process of, uh, and we're gonna see some contracts later tonight for that. That, they're on site, trailers are on site, the, uh, steel fencing and things like that are going in now. Site work itself will start probably next week. That's a really fast-paced project, so that's gonna start happening pretty quick. So your next meeting will show a lot more pictures of, uh, of what's going on out there and, you know, the site work and how it's moving along. Any questions?
That's good.
Thank you, Keith.
All right, no questions from the board. We will move on to the next item on the agenda. Word of comments and, uh, why don't we start with our recently sworn in board member, Ms. Wall?
I don't normally write these down, but I did because I had the last day. Um, I have a couple of thoughts and thank yous I shared on social media, but I would like to share them here tonight as well. The first person I would like to thank is my husband, Jason Wall. I don't think when we got married almost 19 years ago, that he envisioned that for better or for worse would include holding a sign with my name on it on the side of the road on a 95-day degree day in July. Thank you for being willing to go along with almost all of my crazy plans. Our family, these four walls, has a goal of living beyond our own four walls to serve others and being a member of the school board embodies my goal. A special thanks to my kids who understand that even though they are my absolute pride and joy, it is my concern for the almost 12,000 extra kids that is my why. Another special thank you to my mom and dad who taught me to be brave and to the importance of showing up. They have always encouraged me that I can do anything and they have always been right by my side. If this were under normal circumstances, they would be sitting in the front row tonight. Thank you to every teacher, parent, community member, educator, volunteer, and friend who supported me during this race. It was your collective efforts that got me reelected. Your comments of support reiterated to me that you have appreciated me being accessible, approachable, and showing up for kids over the last five years. And my only promise is that I will continue to do so. I was overwhelmed by the number of people who turned out to vote and by those who encourage others to vote as well in a local election year of vote matters. I look forward to continuing to champion education funding reform, equitable staff compensation, expanded opportunities for all of our students, and much, much more. Wayne Meadows, you ran a great race and you should be commended for your efforts. It is not easy to run for office. It is even harder to do so during a global pandemic with a delayed election cycle. Let's find the time to chat. There are plenty of ways to be involved in our school district. While the numbers ended up in my favor, I understand that there were several voters who did not choose me. To those voters, I say, please reach out, michelle.wall@appicarumk12.us. We can only do better for our district by working together. Elections are like a roller coaster, highs, lows, twists, turns. When it's over, you have a mix of feelings, excitement, but a real sense of relief. The most incredible part is those who are along with the ride. Thank you for being a part of this ride. And then to my announcements, I hope you hold the bagels of the board member on Thursday morning starting at 8:30. Again, this is an informal event. We are monthly to talk about district concerns. The meeting, uh, information to join is on my Appicarum Lake School Board Facebook member page, excuse me, Appicarum Lake School Board Member Facebook page, or the Appicarum Lake School District page. A huge congratulations to Mr. Hershey on your retirement. You will be missed immensely. Um, and finally, I just want to add that none of these decisions or discussions about the upcoming school year have been easy. I'm a parent in this district as well as a board member. I have equally felt your frustrations for a plan and for more information, but that frustration is mainly with the situation and not with our district. I too am extremely frustrated with our governor. We were instructed by his office that they would be providing us with guidance and that guidance ended up being too short of a measure. If that was going to be the guidance, I wish he would have told us that in May. Here in the Appicarum Lake School District, we have a guiding principle of doing what is best for kids and that includes safety. We will do our best tonight to approve a plan where kids are safe, loved, and educated. It would be hard to determine if any of the measures that are discussed or even taken are a reaction, but it will be obvious if we do not do enough. To close, no matter how you feel about the plans presented, please remember that kids are looking to the adults to set the tone for the kids. Please be kind as you navigate this new world and understand that for all of our educators and for all of us, that this might feel like our very future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Meadows.
I'd like to congratulate Michelle on, uh, her successful career. I know your dedication to this district and to the students of our district is second to none. So, welcome back. Um, to Mr. Meadows, thank you for, um, I know you campaigned on several issues and I just want you to know that your voice was not unheard. As we always do when we recruit after an election and then we look at what was presented, we're all gonna try to make this district better. Please don't walk away, stay involved. I also like to thank all the staff involved in cleaning from the tornado, making for area this week and I hope our community stays safe while we're cleaning up. I'll just pick up on Miss Wall's comments to the teachers, staff and parents, thank you for writing to us and expressing your views on what you thought we should do as we proceed down this road of COVID, you know, and higher remote or some mixture of both. I know it won't be an easy decision, but the safety of our students, the staff and faculty and his parents. And then tonight, tonight's night, I have a mark on my calendar for well over a year. Tonight's Bob Hershey's last board meeting. He's retiring at the end of this month. I had considered asking for more workshop later this month to squeeze in, to squeeze in one more of our person presentation, but I figured next slide Steve would probably throw this mouse in my way. So I am revealing my age a little bit here, but I actually do remember the calamity of nineteen ninety six in the town. I do remember how it got there and I do remember the trials and tribulations that this that this district went through. When you were hired, we could have anticipated the mark you would leave on this district. Your tenacity, your overwhelming patience as projects continued to come one after another, gag after another, fourteen schools, ten major renovations, nuts and bolts around the facilities department and not a single problem deterred you. I personally learned more about Bob Turles, the compaction rated soil, construction, construction contracts, architectural firms and bidding process more than I thought possible, but probably the most important thing that you left with me was we can only build what we can afford and not and not a darn stamp on. Over your time here, you've guided this district through tough times and good times, all while looking out to the best interest of this district. Not enough people get credit for what they bring to the job. Your professionalism, unvaried, zero path, things should get done and mostly not afraid to speak your mind when it is needed, even if the other side agreed with you or not. But that's what makes you special. You had a job to do and you did it extremely well. I for one can't thank you enough for taking my questions and my fellow board members' questions and making sure we understood your interest completely. Thank you for the tours you took us all on and personally the construction you made to me, most importantly, I value your counsel, your wisdom and your charm. I tried to add a little humor to this, but please don't underestimate or undervalue the impact you have had in this district. Every project under budget and on time, ordering some really crazy building schedules. In closing. In closing, I just want you to know that in my opinion, you were one of the best hires this district ever made. I hope you enjoy the beginning of your next chapter and you're like, I should be grateful. Dark ass cross gear professional for the district, but more importantly, I appreciate my being down there and you all the best.
All right, well put. Ms. Zedlin.
Good evening, everyone. We started today's board meeting with a tribute to Mrs. Rob and I just wanted to to add to that. I met Mrs. Rob a few years ago and I was expressing to her that one of my daughters, when he wasn't wasn't feeling high school, wasn't feeling, she was not excited to go into the building and Mrs. Rob said, I will find her and I will make her comfortable. And for three years, Mrs. Rob met my daughter at the door to say, good morning, Kayla. And she said, sometimes Kayla spoke, sometimes she didn't, but she knew that there was a friendly face meeting her at the door every day. And I don't know why in my mind I thought that that was this special for Kayla, but reading the students' tributes across social media, she did that for a lot of kids and she meant so much to our community. And my last memory of Mrs. Rob was at the Middletown graduation and she had been ill, but she made it her business to come to the graduation. And as soon as I saw her, I wanted to hug her, and she wanted to hug me, but I said, this Rob can't touch, we're on virus, I don't want to get you sick, I'm so glad to see you. But we air hugged and we air kissed and I was so happy to see her and she was so happy to see me and what she said to me was, I had to see my kids graduate. I had to see them. And if and for those of you who were there, especially that afternoon graduation where it was like a thousand degrees, she was out there and she watched her kids graduate. So I am happy that we gave her a moment of silence, but for those of you who don't know her, I wanted to give you a glimpse of a really wonderful, loving person who will be greatly missed. And we don't really all cry a lot at these board meetings, so it's today and that day, but she will be greatly missed and thank you to Mrs. Rob's family for allowing us to share her spirit with us. Okay. All right, Bob, I wanted to say to you, I made my business to walk around Fairview Campus. I knew today was going to be your last day and I hadn't taken you up on your many, many offers to go inside the building, I've just been swamped, but I said, well, I need to at least see the building because you show us pictures every week. And it's phenomenal. It is, I was blown away several times, I stopped on my walk and thought, I can't believe that we have put together such a phenomenal building. Now, this was before the storm damage and I love tennis and so I literally walked on the tennis courts and pretended to play. And I mean, the tennis courts are phenomenal, I can't wait till the next year of when we can, we can play. I went out and saw all the fields and I looked in all the windows as much as I could and you know, thank you for putting together what we saw on paper many years ago, you have put together with written word and it's more beautiful than I imagined. The pictures don't do it justice, so we tease you all the time, like next slide, but the pictures, you know, the pictures don't do it justice and the land is beautiful. So I just wanted to personally say, thank you. It is a phenomenal, amazing building and I don't need to sound shocked like you don't do a great job because you do a phenomenal job, but I was blown away. The pictures don't do it justice, it's it's a great building and you know, when you come back from Montana fishing, please, you know, why don't you come in and see it filled with with students?
Well, you still have twenty days to take me off.
That's true, I still have twenty days, I still have twenty days, okay, all right. You haven't counted that clock, don't you? Um, last but not least, I know that we have a lot of people tuned in, you guys are not tuned in to give us, you know, content and be emotional today. You're here today because you want to hear about what we're going to do about the school building. We are going to hear a plan later on today and I just want, I want you all to know my guiding principles because I thought long and hard about how I was going to vote and put in, I guess, the rules that I would engage to to guide me. So I have four guiding principles and I want to share them with you so that she will know however I vote, what what was important to me. One is the safety of all of our staff, students and their families. Two, all of the teachers and staff who wrote emails, I've read each and every one of them. I started replying to them, but I couldn't get through all of them. So some of you got replies, some of you didn't, I apologize, it was a lot, but I did read each and every one of them for the and and understand that some are for starting remotely and some are for starting live right away. So there's a lot of different views out there, but I read them all and digested them all. But my number one guideline principle is safety for staff, students and their families because I get it, everybody in the building has to go home to. Two was the best educational practices for all, particularly our younger friends who don't do as well with remote learning. So you know, I'm going to be looking at what are the best educational practices for our students, particularly our younger students, because remote learning is is difficult for them. I can see a kindergartner wanting to press all the buttons as opposed to actually listening to what his or her teacher has to say, I get that. Number three, I like to follow the science and data, so I've been reading and digesting as much information from non-political sources, really from scientists and doctors. And that's what I've been reading and that's what I'm going to to follow. And finally, any plan that we come up with, my my question, my gut question to myself is, am I comfortable sending my own child who has a chronic health condition into the school building to come home to me and I'm diabetic? So if I get coronavirus apparently, it might be difficult for me. So this this decision for me is very personal. If I don't feel comfortable doing that or my sending my own child to school and having her come home to me, then it would not be a comfortable decision for me to do for the public. So I just want to let you know, that's where I stand and that's kind of my guidepost and I look forward to the plan that we'll we'll hear about later on today.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wright.
Okay, well, I'll try and be brief because I know everybody's waiting for the the presentation. Congratulations, Michelle. Thank you. Race well run. Congratulations to Bob. I have to tell you that all over all these years, I use what you've taught us, what you've taught me through the years to guide how I move through engineering and construction at work. So a lot of times I'm saying to myself, what would Bob do or how would Bob handle this? And a lot of the stuff that we've gone through over the years has really kind of shaped how I take it, you know, not not school construction, but you know, industry. I really appreciate everything that you've taught me over the years and I will take you up on the last twenty days to go take a tour of our at Fairview because I just could have been swamped and I would like to see it. Um.
But you guys, twenty days is what we say.
Yes, twenty days, not twenty one, all right.
I have keys and everything now.
I'll be in much before, before. Thank you to all the teachers, all the community members, everybody, all the parents, everybody who has reached out to me and to the board through email. I figured I would say my my thank you here to everybody who sends a message because I was kind of getting, you know, overwhelmed. I checked my email and then five minutes later, there'd be like forty messages. So we, you know, we, I really, and I did read all of them. I thank you to everybody who sent those. There are a lot of thoughts out there, a lot of educated thoughts and a lot of pleas and for those who called me and were vulnerable to me about situations that they're dealing with at home and their concerns, I want to say thank you to to you as well. We have a decision to make tonight, I I do feel that most of you understand that this won't be a decision taken lightly. To Shar's point about her guiding principles, I think we we all feel, you know, along those lines and have everybody, we want everybody to be safe, we want our our learners to learn however is best for them. And we hope we can do you proud and and for those who we may not make happy, we we hope that you can understand how we're proceeding the way we're going to proceed, however that might be. Finally, to Matt and your whole staff, thank you for all the work, the committee that we're going to see they've put in and to changing, the the information changes every couple days, so having to, you know, completely pivot and look in different avenues and be able to react on a dime is very important. I'm sure you've all gained some new skills over the last couple of months about time management and budgeting and all that kind of stuff. But you probably heard through all the the comments tonight that that we have a lot of people that make up this this district and that really care and love each other and love the kids, Mrs. Rob, Bob, our district teachers, the the principals, the superintendents, all the communications that you've seen or you've heard about tonight, it's clear that that care and safety is of the utmost importance and there's lots of balance and and we're going to do the best that that we possibly can tonight. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you. I will try to be equally brief. As always, the problem with being the last board member to comment is that all the good comments have been made, but I will say, welcome back, Michelle Wall. You know, you worked hard the last five years and I'm sure you're going to work just as hard these next five years. Mr. Meadows, it takes great courage, I believe, to place your name on the ballot and you are to be commended for that and to be commended for your willingness to do public service. Congrats to Bob Hershey, everyone said it, I don't think it's any accident that there's been such an outpouring of tributes. I mean, it's all well earned and well deserved. You know, so much has happened, we had our school board meeting in July, on July seventh, we had a school board election and there's actually, even though it's the highlight of our year, I mean, we had two, actually four graduation ceremonies.
We were letting you hug.
Well, thank you, I did save something for me and as always, it was the highlight of the year, it's why we do this job and I'm just so happy that we were able to see kids crossing the stage in their caps and gowns. Up until this year, I had shaken the hand of every student who crossed the stage and for obvious reasons couldn't do that this year. But it was, it was really, it's always, I think, the highlight of the year and a great, great time. We're going to, next on the agenda, we're going to approve some board minutes and then we're going to get to the reason why I think over a thousand people have tuned in to watch must see TV. And by way of introduction to the school reopening topic, you know, I'll just observe and people, some people at least are probably tired of me quoting this old Chinese curse, but we do live in interesting times and I don't think anybody could have foreseen where we are today, even back in March when it started off as just a two week hiatus. Tonight, we're going to be taking a vote and at the same time, no matter what we decide based on all the public comments that I've received and and people I've talked to, there are going to be some people who are disappointed, that happens. There are some people who are going to be pleased. But I think as every board member has said, we listen and we take seriously what we're doing here and I know that we all appreciate getting feedback from parents, from teachers, from others in the community and even from students. And and I've talked to a number of students for tonight just to try to get their perspective on what they think and, you know, not surprisingly, there's been a wide range of opinions. There are some folks, including some teachers, who are ready to reopen schools, they think it's important to be with their kids right away. I think obviously that would be our our preference if we could do it, but you know, the governor did issue a thirty four page document, it's available on the internet somewhere. And it's all the guidelines that he wants school districts to follow before they can reopen or if they want to reopen. And there's a lot of detail there, you know, calls for mass for kids above fourth grade, it calls for social distancing, all that sort of stuff. It makes it very hard and very challenging to come up with options and plans. And so as Ms. Wright just said, I mean, I know that the district has been working very hard to come up with the plans, there are options that they're going to present to us. I know that even as we got this thirty four page document, you know, our governor does want us to reopen on some sort of hybrid basis. I know the CDC and Dr. Fauci have opined at various times that they think students should come back, that that's important. But as has been said by many tonight, our guiding principle has always been to do what we find to be, what we believe to be in the best interest of our students. And so, you know, all the comments we've got, we've taken those into account, we want to have kids back in school, but we want to have them back in school in a safe or as safe an environment as we can do. And so I'm going to be listening to presentations and we all are very closely. And then we're going to make the decision that we think is in the best interest of our kids and our school district. So with that, that's the end of my comments. Next on the agenda, we do have in front of us board minute meeting, meeting minutes from our July seven, twenty twenty meeting for approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the board minutes for the July seventh, twenty twenty meeting, as presented.
So, motion by Ms. Wall, second by Mr. Abrams to approve the board meeting minutes for July seven, twenty twenty for approval as presented. Any questions, comments or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda, school opening in the fall. Dr. Burrows.
Please proceed to get the PowerPoint up. I just want to start off by saying thank you. Um, I want to thank the team that's put a lot of work into this. We do have a 67-page, uh, PowerPoint presentation. Uh, we will not go through every slide. Part of that was just for you to see them. There was a lot of thought and effort that went into this. Has not been a decision that's been easy or taken lightly. Um, everywhere I've gone for the last two months, I've been asked, how are we going to reopen schools? And I've been able to honestly say that the governor's going to make an announcement the first week of August on what that's going to look like. Uh, unfortunately, we didn't get clear direction on what that should look like. We did get a 34-page document, um, with about 207 thousand lots, uh, and wanted to open schools safely. So we, we came up, we've, uh, we've started in June and planned a process and knowing that there will be three possibilities of, uh, in-person or what we were considering normal, of a hybrid option, and of a, um, virtual option. And we really started with some goals and guiding principles with that. And that was, number one, the board's mentioned this tonight and, um, in our community meetings that we've had, where we've had all kinds of stakeholders involved in that, uh, through the surveys. Um, and I do appreciate all the parents and students and staff that took part in our surveys. I do also appreciate our ADA who gave surveys as well and, um, provided the data from those surveys. And, and just from the letters, I mean, I, I also received numerous letters from staff, parents, um, students. I've had the opportunity to talk to some students and just get a feel for where they are. Um, but the number one thing is that we have to keep our students, our employees, and our community safe. And I know, uh, Shar mentioned just the next thing, make a decision based on the objective information from scientists, public health experts, and the governor. And if you, if you're involved in this, you know that depending on the news you listen to, what scientists you listen to, this is all over the place. There's not a clear cut right and wrong. Um, there appears to be a lot of opinion or subject to, to this. Then we want to offer virtual options to families who are not ready to return to on-campus instruction and have a safer viable option for student learning. As you heard the governor's announcement, uh, that there needs to be a remote option for students, no matter what the situation is. And then we did remote marching. Our staff and our ministry was in a fabulous job in getting that up, as I mentioned before, in a week. But we've learned a lot of lessons from that. We know it was not perfect and it must be better if we return to that. So we have, um, expectations and outcomes for students in our virtual school that we've learned through what we've done previously. So our goal is also ease into hybrid learning option with understanding that we must be prepared to transition every student into an e-learning environment should the COVID-19 situation worsen. We keep hearing from some people that this is going to get worse in October, November. We've also seen some, um, some sports things that have returned. Um, you know, you can see the NBA, which is in a bubble or they're there all the time and they're getting tested all the time. What we've seen with Major League Baseball, where they've returned and they've had to cancel games and things like that because they're not in a bubble and they have people going out and in, um, from that. So that is things that we have to look at. And one thing we also learned from our surveys is that even the parents that are willing to send students back in in a hybrid situation, if a student in their school, on their bus, or in their classroom tests positive, you're not going to return your, the majority of you are not going to return your student back to school. So we have to be prepared, whatever model we choose, to be able to transition and have those transitions. Um, our goal is to return students to full-time, five-day, week-in-person instruction as soon as it is safe to do so. The plan is subject to change as best practices evolve. As someone mentioned up here, that changes day-to-day or if the protocols are in turn to be ineffective or unsustainable, we're going to have to adapt and change as we all have through this pandemic. So after careful consideration, our recommendation to the board is for us to re-enter in our virtual for the first six weeks, from September 8th to October 16th. As I mentioned before, and some of you guys have questions about our virtual, uh, option and what it's going to look like, I will get into a little more detail on this. And we also have, uh, people here on the team that will also present a little more detail on that, on what it will look like. We'll continue to offer more detail as we get into this, um, through this process. But that's our recommendation. Um, we're going to take time to evaluate as we go through this and we're going to look at, um, how this is progressing. And then we would enter a hybrid instruction model on October 19th. So what would that hybrid instruction model look like? The recommendation that we're making to the board is, um, but followed by the six weeks, September 8th to Oct., October 16th, is a mix of live and pre-recorded instruction activities. Schedules will vary by grade configurations. Lessons will build upon what we learned last year to improve engagement out home for students. So at the virtual level, preschool, three- to four-year-olds, we're looking for it Monday through Friday, 12:30 to 3:30. At the elementary level, uh, kindergarten through fifth grade, uh, meeting Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 2:30. At the middle school level, uh, Monday through Friday, 9:30 to 3:30. And then high school grades nine through 12, Monday through Friday, 9:30 to 3:30. So, uh, as I mentioned before, we would begin hybrid on October 19th. Students will be assigned cohorts, AKA groups. Cohorts will alternate between in-school and virtual instructions. Schedules will vary by grade configurations. And as mentioned by the governor, families will have the option to continue with the virtual-only instruction if that is preferred by them. So at the preschool level, um, the way the hybrid would look would be classes Monday through Friday. Hybrid learners, uh, would come in from 9:00 to 12:00. And then there would be virtual options from 12:30 to 3:30. At the elementary level, it'll be Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 2:30. Cohorts will alternate one day in-school, the next day remote. On Wednesday, all elementary students will participate in remote learning. At the middle school level, classes will meet Monday through Friday. Students are assigned to one of three cohorts. Two cohorts attend classes two times a week in the building. And one cohort will remain 100% virtual, uh, that would be parent choice. In-school classes will meet 9:30 to 11:45, Monday through Thursday. And then virtual classes would meet 12:45 to 3:30. On Friday, all students will participate in remote learning, uh, from 12:45 to 3:30. At the high school level, um, classes will meet Monday through Friday. Students are assigned to one of three cohorts, similar to what you saw at the middle school level. We have two that would be in-building and one cohort would be 100% virtual. Um, in-school classes would meet 9:30 to 11:35, Monday through Thursday. The virtual classes meet 12:45 through 3:30. All, on Fridays, all high school students participate in remote learning, 9:30 to 3:30. You're seeing us extend the time of remote learning. That's something that we learned from the spring, uh, more face-to-face engagement time with teachers. So when the governor's executive order is lifted and schools are able to offer in-person instruction, we will communicate the options available to our families and staff. As I mentioned before, we have to be incredibly flexible and our model has to be where we can go in and out of school and continue learning to happen. We also have the, and we want as much face-to-face interaction with students may be, um, in-person or virtual between our students and teachers as possible, while also honoring the teacher's contract and the time, um, that they have. So this time, um, we have some people who are coming into the hybrid options. As I mentioned, this document is 67 pages, uh, with a lot of different hybrid options on here. I'm going to ask the people to present, to kind of really focus on the model that we're recommending and then to kind of skim through the models that are out there, just highlighting those. So I just want people to see that we did have other thoughts of this, but after meeting and looking at it, the best option is the one that we're recommending to the board.
So Dr. Pepp, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
I'm going to go stand before the camera and clear a comment.
You're responsible for it.
Good evening, everyone. My staff as well as my counterpart, Dr. TJ Berry, who's the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools. We both met with our leaders of our buildings and came up with a lot of options. As you've already heard, we've kept safety as the number one priority. And so the background to all of this, we received a lot of information from surveys that were given, focus groups, task force, and listening to the governor's press conference. And you can see the various dates where we gathered all of that information and then met with our teams, our leaders who were in the building on the ground level, who weighed in heavily on a lot of the options that were discussed. And so just like we've heard Dr. Burrows talk about, we, we discussed various options, various ways, number of days, weeks on, weeks off. And so I've invited some of the administrators to talk about it. It was modeled by Dr. Kim Rankado, principal of our preschool, of Dr. Gail Rutter, who's representing kindergarten level, and then Ms. Gina Robinson, who's going to talk about the elementary models and options that we discussed.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the, um, opportunity for me to review the hybrid option for preschool. What we're, um, presenting tonight is to have our three-year-olds, um, attend, our AM three-year-olds would attend two days a week, Monday and Tuesday. Our AM, PM three-year-olds would attend Wednesday, Thursday, Friday in the morning. Our full-day fours would attend Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning. That would give us an opportunity for our staff to, um, take their duty-free lunch, um, do some planning and prepare for their virtual learners in the afternoon. Um, we have many children. Um, our enrollment right now is about 166 children with IEPs, 71, uh, typically developing children. And we usually add about 50 children throughout the school year, um, who have IEPs. So, um, there's, there's a lot of work to be done with our preschoolers. We have a lot of children receiving therapy. That afternoon will give us an opportunity to get in those teletherapy hours as well. So there's lots of considerations for preschoolers, as you would imagine. Um, we really think it's important to just have children in the morning so that we can do a thorough cleaning. Um, our custodians can get in, we'll have lots of surfaces, um, that will need to be cleaned each and every day. Um, as you also know, preschoolers do not sit in desks. Um, they sit in, um, on the floor, they run around. Um, and we have looking at things like using a cube chair, possibly with trays to help with our distancing of our young children. Um, more material are needed in, in addition to devices for young children. It's not something we spend a lot of time with in the preschool. Um, then we look at the construction site over at Meredith and the, um, survey indicated that many more parents would be, um, interested in driving their children. So that's something we'll really need to consider, how we will bring that many cars onto the campus. Social distancing is likely to be a challenge with preschoolers. Um, I know many families are probably talking to their children already about that, um, how they can do masks, um, keep masks on during the day in a very safe and healthy way. Um, the state is encouraging that our young children to wear them, but it's obviously not mandatory. So we're talking a lot about, um, providing more materials for our families, um, during, um, the virtual, um, model. Um, preschool's a very hands-on experience. So we found that some of our families just inherited the materials, even in glue sticks and crayons and markers and scissors. So we really want to be on top of that and make sure that we have the materials available for our parents because they do so much of the, um, the teaching during, um, virtual. Um, it is increasing screen time for young children. It's something that we try not to do a lot of. Many of our children are in school for, um, to have that social, that play time, so we don't spend a lot of time in screen time. And it's often difficult for some of our children to, um, to engage in that screen time. We really want to make sure we're providing more teacher planning for consistency. Um, in the preschool world, we didn't have any digital platform. So, um, I commend my staff, they were amazing, putting together, um, many wonderful, um, activities. We used a, a platform, they use Zoom. Um, so we want to just really improve upon those things, be more consistent for our, um, students and families and increase any, in the face-to-face time through the, um, the Zoom if possible. So the teachers will be doing that in the afternoon.
Well, now I'll turn it over to Dr. Rutter.
Hi, thank you. So I am responsible tonight for sharing the kindergarten through grade five, option A for hybrid learning, which we would recommend take place after those six weeks of virtual learning to begin the school year. So if you take a look at the model, you'll notice three different groups. Uh, as Dr. Burrows mentioned, uh, we will need to provide a virtual school option to students who, um, either want to remain home because of health concerns of their own or just their comfort level of returning to school. So there would be a group of students who are participating in virtual school, um, all days of the week, even in our hybrid teaching situation. From there, we would take the remaining students and divide them into two cohorts. Uh, we did discuss dividing that cohort by alphabet so that families that have children at multiple grade levels would have their children, uh, both attending school and being home from school on the same days and not having too many things to manage, uh, within their home. So if you look at the model, the students in cohort A would be attending in-person school on Mondays and Tuesdays. And our cohort B students would be learning remotely on those days. On Thursday and Friday, our cohort B students would be attending in-school learning and our cohort A students would be doing remote learning on those days. Um, we are recommending within this model that Wednesday be an at-home day for all students. Um, and we are recommending that that day be used for a variety of things, such as student hours, so students could be completing work that was either assigned in-school or virtually, or just spending some extra time working on projects, uh, that they aren't able to get to on those other days. Uh, we were looking to have office hours for teachers, uh, so that they could meet individually with students, perhaps working one-on-one and assessing students, checking in with individual students and families to see what assistance they needed, um, and/or providing additional support, uh, to families and/or children. We would utilize those Wednesdays for professional development so we can continue to learn about the best practices in virtual learning. It would be time for us to dig into the plethora of data that's available on the online platforms we're using so we can continue to provide the best instruction for those students. Um, and then it provides time as well to meet in individual PLCs for teachers to continue to collaborate and make sure that we're continuing to meet the, uh, needs of all of our students. Uh, finally, Wednesday would serve as a cleaning day so that we could be sure that between the two cohorts, uh, that we have done that deep cleaning, um, just to prevent any, um, more interaction between the different groups of students. Yo, yo, get out. So like Dr. B said, there are several considerations for option A. Um, one being a shift slightly in the start and end time, uh, for kindergarten through grades five. Um, that shift in the school day does primarily provide for us time to have teacher planning at the end of the day. Um, so currently what happens is, um, teachers, uh, take students to another classroom, for example, like a related arts or some other kind of learning opportunity so that they can have their duty-free planning time. Um, if we are able to shift that to, to the end of the day, um, it's going to reduce the transition that students have to have throughout the day so that we're able to maintain, uh, the safety requirements with cleaning and disinfecting as children go to different areas of the school. Uh, there are several considerations with transportation that we have to be thinking about. Um, currently in the document that Mr. Forston has referenced a few times, um, our transportation capacity has been really, uh, reduced by two-thirds. Um, therefore, we are able to transport fewer students at one time. Uh, so we know that many more families will be choosing to, uh, transport their child and that shift in start time can help to support that transportation need as well. We know that, um, if we are going to go with this model, um, option A, that we're going to need to survey families and get names behind the numbers. So we need to know which children at which grade level are choosing, um, which of the options. So we need to know which specific families are going to be participating in virtual learning. So we need to know which specific families are going to be participating in virtual learning solely, and which of those families are comfortable with returning to in-person school in the hybrid model. We know that childcare is an issue and a concern for families. We know that in the hybrid model, that families will need to have childcare for children three days of the week. So it's a consideration in this, that we have to be thinking about within this hybrid model. We need to think about and consider how we are going to comply with social distancing rules. Again, as Mr. Porchna has mentioned, there are several requirements being mandated if we do return to school. So there are a lot of considerations about how we will provide for the social distancing and masks for both adults and children. We'll want to consider some type of virtual school memorandum of understanding, so that families are committed to that virtual learning and understanding their requirements and the requirements for students attendance, et cetera, if they are choosing to participate in school solely at home. And lastly, we have a pretty large consideration for staffing. We do need to have our staff make plans for face-to-face learning, for remote learning, and for virtual school students. So we would look to provide a bank of staff, perhaps within this model, that would be solely dedicated to teaching virtual school students, if we have the staff available to do so. And then we do have to make a consideration, we have several staff in the school who are working with students at various levels or within the various models. So there are a lot of things within staff that we would be looking at and planning to implement, option A for kindergarten through grade five. And at this time, I will pass the conversation over to Gina Robinson, principal at Cedar Lane Elementary School, and she is going to share kindergarten through grade five, option B for hybrid learning.
Good evening, everyone. So one other option that we considered, based on the survey results that we had gotten from our families, we were right around 50% saying they would choose the hybrid model, and 50% saying they would choose to stay virtual. So because of that, our numbers of students that would be coming to school would be a lot less. So that would give us the potential to have just one group of students that would be coming in, and we could have them come in for four days a week. Similar to the model Dr. Rutter spoke to, they would come in on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday, we would use as a virtual day, and then they would be back in the building Thursday and Friday. And then we would still continue to have that second cohort that would be doing virtual learning just from home. Wednesday would look similar, where teachers would have time for professional development. We would have office hours available, so all of those things would stay consistent. There are some considerations also with this model, if you want to go to the next slide. So one of the big things, it's really contingent on the number of students. So right now, based on the survey data, like I said, it's about 50/50. However, we would need more information on specific students' grade levels to make sure that we have the right amount of staffing. And then this also doesn't provide a lot of flexibility either. So families would commit to this option, and then we would need them to stick with this option. Because if the numbers got too high back at school, then we no longer could have one cohort, which is why we were leaning towards option A, because it provided more flexibility. And I'll turn it back to Dr. Pepakai.
Thank you, everyone. So you can see there, just listed, we talked about the different considerations for both virtual learning as well as for hybrid learning. You can see the bullets in there. Definitely, with the virtual learning, we want the alignment to be there between the in-school day as much as the alignment with the remote day. Definitely both sides, parent assistance is needed. As Ms. Edelin spoke to, the early learners do have a lot of parent assistance with that in the learning process. And so you can see where those are the frameworks of the option. We have currently work groups, and this is merit as well on the secondary level, work groups that are working to actually get into the logistics and the details of those options. You can see the various routes and the schedule once they are working to have that to full implementation of rolling that out to staff and other stakeholders that would be actually implementing the various options. And then overall reentry thoughts, just again, a lot of logistics with facilities and safety, and what goes into making sure schools are safe for our students, and then the other outlined elements for our overall thoughts that we talked about when we met to discuss our options.
At this time, we'll turn it over to the secondary. We have Mr. Nick Hoover and Dr. Bonnie Prine.
Good evening. I'm Nick Hoover. I'm the principal at Meredith Middle School, and I'm representing the middle school scheduling committee.
Good evening. I'm Bonnie Prine. I'm the principal of Odessa High School, and I'm presenting the high school's schedule options along with Nick.
Great. We can go to the next slide. So first up, as Dr. Burrows talked about, some of these details for the virtual only. We're looking at a 9:30 to 3:30 day for students. Classes range between 30 to 45 minutes. And this would, again, obviously be virtual all across the board. So we're going to share you a middle school model. So again, this is just a sample. This is not what every student would do. But we basically took our schedule and condensed it down. You see our students would take two related arts courses and four core courses, and that's typical of what they would take if we were in the regular building. You see our related arts courses are 30 minutes. They're typically about 40 to 45 when we're in the building. And our core courses are 45 minutes in virtual, which are typically about 55 or 60.
Before I begin with this model, I would like to first explain that the high school schedule is built on four periods a day. And we felt at the high school, it was imperative that we stuck with those four periods for the following reasons. Number one, we would be able to easily transfer back and forth, whether it was to hybrid or to full, back to brick and mortar if necessary, and transfer back if necessary. But more importantly, our students need to earn credits to graduate from high school and get a Delaware and Applequinn and McHigh School diploma. And they need these particular classes to do so. Typically, our classes, we can offer eight classes a year. Some run every other day, some run for only a semester, but they meet every day. And this schedule allows for this to happen. For example, on an A day, our classes would be 45 minutes. We would meet, the teacher would have class with her period one English class, or whatever class it would be. And then she would run through, or he would run through, a regular class, not just, not just lecture. They would have activities in the class. And then after 45 minutes, there would be a 20-minute period where the teacher would stay online, but possibly the students could go into breakout groups, or students could get started on their own homework, or they could meet individually or in small groups with the teachers for further clarification. And then after a 15-minute break, we would go on to period two. In this case, the, the child would have math, again, for 45 minutes, and then they would have that 20-minute help session with the teachers as needed. We would break for then lunch and talk with an advisor if necess, if, if needed, or have our special SEL classes, whatever we wanted to schedule in there. Third period would continue with, again, we, we said, physical education for 45 minutes, and then the kids could go and do a workout, where they would get this extra, there would be extra work for them to do in every one of these classes outside of their 45 minutes. And then finally, we would end with Spanish with 45 minutes, and the teacher check-in or the teacher work, as we had said before. Now typically, high school schedules run for 90 minutes. So we're looking at 45 minutes of instruction, followed by 20 minutes of office hours. And notice here, we have English, math, phys ed, and Spanish. If you can go to the next slide, please. You will see that on the B day now, the student would attend science, social studies, ag-science, and then they would still have Spanish, because Spanish meets for all year, or excuse me, Spanish meets for half a year, but every day for 90 minutes. Next slide, please. The considerations for virtual only. All students receive the same face-to-face instruction. The students are taught in the safety and comfort of their own home. Students have all classes every day, or in the, the high school, in the high school sense, they might have a class every other day, but they would be seeing every one of their teachers every other day. Would be a smooth transition, and compared to our learning from last year, there would definitely be increased screen time for students.
Yeah, before moving on from this slide, I wanted to mention too, from the middle school level, I think the importance of this piece is the, the fact of the smooth transition. With this schedule, we could transition from virtual to hybrid to full-on in the building without major schedule changes or anything like that. I think that's important. And, and something I forgot to mention earlier that I think is important for the whole big scope is that we do have a work group that is working on creating models for expectations and best practices, and what that would look like in a 30 or 45-minute class, which I think will be really important as we move forward to try to improve what we did in the spring in our virtual school. So we can move on to option B. So option B, as Dr. Burrows said, is, is the recommended option. This is where we would have two hours in the building. So as many other people have discussed already about having multiple cohorts, one cohort would be completely virtual. Those would be the folks who opted, their families opted to have them completely virtual. Everyone else would be in two cohorts, and I'll explain what that looks like in a second. Our classes would meet in person in the school from 9:30 to around 11:30, 11:45. And virtual classes would meet every day of the week in the afternoon. Next slide. So again, here's a sample schedule. So if you are, let's say, Mr. Forreston, you are cohort A. So you would come into the building on Monday. You would have one of your related arts, that might be French. Your, your core one and two might be English and social studies. You get some academic support, and then you grab your, your lunch and you head out. Then in the afternoon, you do not have to do your core one and two virtually, because you already did them in person. So as you can see, on Monday, you would only have to attend your virtual class, which would be core three and four, and that might be math and, and science. Mr. Forreston, still being cohort A, you'd come back in on Tuesday, and you have your second related arts, which let's say is PE. And then in person, you have your math and your science. We would run an advisory, which is, you know, we work on some goal setting, some social-emotional learning, which I think at this time is extremely important, at least at the middle school level. Again, lunch, travel, and then because you did your math and science in person, you would have your ELA and your social studies virtually in the afternoon. And you can see what your schedule would be like the rest of the week. It would be all virtual in the afternoon. Again, Mr. Forreston being a cohort A student, you would not be in the building on Wednesday through Friday. Next slide. Ms. Edelin is in cohort B. So on Monday and Tuesday, she's not in the building at all, and she's only doing her core classes in the afternoon virtually. So again, from 12:45 to 3:30, she would be working her, working in core classes virtually. And then on Wednesday and Thursday, very similar to cohort A, but now it's on Wednesday and Thursday, she would run through her schedule, whatever that might be. It might be PLTW, math and science, and so on. And you see that the entire school would be virtual on Friday. So we ran through cohort A and B, but let's say Ms. Wall is cohort C, and that's virtual only. Her parents opted to keep her virtually. And that means that her, I'm sorry, can you go back? Yep. Her schedule would only be 12:45 to 3:30 every day. That means that she would have all of her cores synchronized. And again, she would take all of them virtually. One of the, the key aspects here at the middle school level, and I believe at the high school level too, is that you would have a touch point with a teacher every single day. Some of it in person, some of it virtually. But I think that's important, and it's a major step up from where we left off in the spring. Next slide.
Again, at the high school level, following similar speakings by Nick, the students are broken into three cohorts. Two cohorts attend classes twice a week in the building, obviously on different days, and one remains totally virtual. In-school classes meet Monday through Thursday in the morning, virtually in the afternoon. And then on Fridays, the, the virtual classes would meet all day, because in the morning, we would have our A-day schedule, and in the afternoon, our B-day schedule. Next slide shows an example. Okay, so this is our, this is our option of our A day. Let's say that Kayla Edlin is, is in cohort one, and Ann Stewart is in cohort two. So on, on Monday, Kayla would come to school, and she would go through her A-day schedule during the day. She would have English, math, ag-science, and Spanish. And then in the afternoon, everybody would have English, math, ag-science, and Spanish. Now, we would give the option that Kayla could maybe not come that day in the afternoon, but our focus at the high school would be during that morning in-school session, for students to have that face-to-face time, the teacher check-in, going, maybe checking out some homework, or checking out just to see how the kids are doing. So maybe all the instruction doesn't quite take place, so they could pick it up in the afternoon again. Or the kids that weren't there, but they just want a little more time on task, or a little more, they want to hear it one more time. So we would encourage them to come. Again, we're only talking a half an hour class, whether it's in the morning or in the afternoon. Now, since Kayla would be in school on Monday and Tuesday, Ann Stewart would come on Thursday and Friday, and, excuse me, Ann Stewart would come on Wednesday and Thursday, and you'll see the Wednesday schedule there, where again, she would also have her English, math, ag-science, and Spanish, and then in the afternoon, repeat those classes. I'll get to the B schedule in a moment, but first, let's look at Friday. On Friday, we would run through all the classes that would have happened during the week. And we would start with the A-day classes. So both Kayla and Ann Stewart would have their English, math, and science in Spanish. And then the B-day schedule, which you haven't seen yet, would consist of science, social studies, phys ed, and Spanish. Again, notice, Spanish is a block class for a semester, so it's every day all semester. And the students who opted not to come into school at all, they will only meet during the afternoons. So again, as you, as we switch, notice, English, math, ag-science, Spanish. And then if you would please switch the slide to the B-day schedule, you'll see there's the science, there's the social studies, there's the PE, and there's the Spanish taught on Tuesday, Thursday. Again, Kayla coming in on Tuesday, and Ann Stewart coming in on Thursday. Note that what Kayla, what Kay, what Kayla learns on Tuesday, Ann Stewart's learning the same thing virtually in the afternoon. So when Ann Stewart comes in on Thursday, Kayla's learning something new virtually. And again, this is the maximum time, so that we could get the kids, so that we could get the best education possible and the most rigor. Next slide, please. Again, the considerations, since we have to restrict the numbers of student, students on each bus, and also inside the classroom, that's the need for the social, or the need for the two cohorts that come to school on different times, and also the one cohort that stays at home in, and learns in the safety of their own home. And this too would have a smooth transition from virtual to brick and mortar.
Yeah, I want to touch upon that one more time, because same thing that I said before. I think it's the, the virtual option, option A and option B, as a hybrid, I think, work really well together. Again, they flow from if you're virtual only to to a hybrid to eventually if we can get back to brick and mortar full-on, it's an even flow and it would be a very smooth transition from any of those three options. So we'll move on to the third option, option C. I am honestly going to go pretty quick on this for, you'll see why in a second. This is what we call live streaming. This is where teachers would teach students in the building and virtually simultaneously. Same thing with the cohorts that we've explained already. Next slide. Just a quick rundown, teachers would have students in the morning as well as in the afternoon. The key here though, and I believe it's the same for the high school, the key here is if you look at that 11:45 timeframe, that when a teacher is teaching the cohort that's in school, that may only be 10 students. They are also teaching 20 other students at the same time who are at home. I believe this causes a bit of an issue when we're talking about live streaming. It's not the same as teaching with 30 kids in front of you. It's also not the same as teaching virtually. Trying to do both at the same time, I believe would require lots of teacher training and probably extra support in the classroom. And when we get to considerations, we'll also talk about some of the other aspects there as well. Next slide.
Again, looking at the schedule, we would follow our A-day, B-day schedule. And on Monday, when Kayla is in her A-day schedule with her cohort, Ann Stewart, and her cohort two is at home, live streaming as well as the cohort who has, do not want to come into school. And then on Thursday, Friday, when we do the B-day, Kayla comes in. And notice, these classes take place all day. So there would be our instructions with a little bit of break, our instructions with a little bit of break, and time for lunch. And but while the in-school kids are learning with their teacher, the kids at home would be learning as well as they live stream in. But the consideration that is going to make this probably not work, next slide, please, is the fact that it comes with a price of $3.5 million to install cameras that have a 360-degree view of the classroom, so the teacher could walk around and do his or her thing and the kids can see what other students are doing. So it's like, just like being there. Also, the camera systems would take six, well, four to six weeks to install. Nick already mentioned, teachers would need training. Again, though, it's our four-period day at the high school, just what the kids are used to. It's a smooth transition if we had $3.5 million to foot the bill. So board, that's up to you.
Okay, we get it. We get into our last option here, option D. This is what we're calling a week in, week out. Again, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but the students again are divided into three cohorts. Some students are opting for live instruction. And what they would do is they would attend four days in a row and then they would have six days off. During that time that they would be off, the teaching would be asynchronous for many of the classes. We didn't go over synchronized and asynchronous, but synchronized, of course, would mean live at the same time. And asynchronous is basically when teachers post some work and students, you know, instead of doing it at 9:30 with everybody else, they may complete the work later on in the day. Next slide. So a similar schedule to what we've shown here before, but I think one of the keys that for me makes it, that's why I listed it as option D, is that many of the students are not learning virtually, so they're not having a touch point with a teacher. So they're not in person or virtually. They're just learning asynchronously. As a parent and as an educator, I don't believe that that's what's best for our kids. So we did want to present another option. We tried to include as many options as we could. I know you wanted to see multiple options. I'm not sure this is the one that we're leaning towards, though. Next slide.
And at the high school, again, using our, my friends Kayla and Ann Stewart, Kayla would come four days in a row. She would have all of her classes. They would alternate A-day, B-day, A-day, B-day. She would only come four days. Notice, class times again are an hour long, giving 10 minutes to switch between classes. And while she's at home, while she's in school with her cohort, Ann Stewart is home doing homework, doing all the assignments that she was given the week before. And then the following week, Ann Stewart and her cohort come to school. They go through their four periods every day, A-day, B-day, A-day, B-day. And they, then the following, while she's, they're doing that, Kayla and her cohort are at home working on their assignments. And for the third cohort of students who never come in, they would be learning, again, the asynchronously, meaning that there, the teacher would have made videos, would have made assignments on Schoology, but never having that one-on-one attention from a student, from a teacher, and that's not what we think is best for our kids. So we did not feel that we would recommend this. But some of the considerations would be, again, I just mentioned it, I think, the fact that it would be one week on and one week off for the kids that are coming to school. And finally, before, first of all, thank you for listening to us. I know these schedules are confusing. But they're confusing to make, but they, if you need more, if you have more questions or need more help in understanding it, you know, I'd be glad to sit down with you, whether it's virtually or social distance apart and explain them. Also, as I believe the elementary principals said, if we decide, when we decide to go, if we decide to go to any of these hybrid, we need time to get kids in their groups. At the elementary, it's okay possibly to do the first half of the alphabet and the second half of the alphabet. But we need to come up with a cohort that has a similar schedule so that so that all their schedules line up so that they can come on an A-day and would only have a third of the kids there. And they would fit into the classroom. So that will take also us reaching out to families, families telling us, are they coming or not? Are they driving their kids or riding on the bus? So that we can look at every student individually, and that's what it's going to take at the high school and I'm sure the middle school level. Take the time to do that. My counselor, April Help, has looked at the first three, the first three letters of the alphabet, and she says, so far, it's working pretty well, that we can do that, just putting them off in thirds. But again, we need to know exactly who's coming and who's not. So again, thank you for listening to us.
Yeah, and I would think, just to touch upon what Bonnie said there, I think that we would need at least a few weeks to get that done when you're talking about 1,000 students or more at the high school, of course. When you're trying to break classes out into cohorts, it's going to take some time. So we would just need some time to do that. I would also open it up to any questions, but before that, I wanted to also make a comment here. I did have the pleasure to work with Ms. Rob, and she is a phenomenal human being. And so I was lucky to work with her and she will be missed.
Yeah, I should have said that already. She was a dear friend of mine. And she helped me become a better educator. And I had her, both her children when I was still teaching and sometimes we don't know God works in mysterious ways, but there's an angel in heaven right now looking down upon us and I hope, I hope helping us make the right decisions.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. We're going to pause the presentation this time. We've given a lot of information. I feel like we need a seventh inning stretch, but we've given a lot of information here. So I'm going to give the board an opportunity to ask any questions of the presenters and TJ and Sharon if they have at this point.
Ms. Edlin.
So I have two questions, very different questions. The first question actually is from a parent. What, if anything, we have planned for in the immersion program?
So right now, we are with those work groups that were listed specifically, two of the work groups, engaging in foster and community learners and then curriculum expectations. So with that, Dr. Beni Bento is part of the expectations for the curriculum. So we are looking at specifically, we were a lot clearer from members of the task force and the focus groups that we had, that we did want an increase in conversation, what's it look like in the virtual world for emerging learners? So we've heard that, been at the table talking about how we can best do that so that it does look different than what it does in the spring. So we've been convening with the groups, with the principals of the schools as well to talk about how we can meet those needs that some of the parents have been emailing about on the spring.
So they, they will still, I'm sorry, to them still follow the cohort's schedule, but obviously their cohort will be the people in their emerging classes, the Spanish and Chinese.
Correct.
But if we, or when we move to in-class, how does that work? Because they used to spend half the day in one classroom where they only spoke English and the other half, what do we do for clean?
So that's part of the scheduled work group. So with the scheduled work group, they're looking at, what does the day in life look like for a third-grade emergency student or a fifth grader or kindergarten student? So that's why I think these options are, and that's, you know, right, like, once you have our options, then we can continue to refine a lot of the work that they're doing in the work groups.
And for anybody who's tuning in right now, our immersion program right now only goes to fifth grade. So we're only looking at options kind of five for our immersion, just in case. And we're ignoring that for the upper grades. We're not there yet.
Right. No, that's fine, that's fine. My second question is completely different. I don't know who would answer this, but when do we start talking about transportation and safety and getting students to school? To be, you know, I am very certain that we can make the school safe once students get into the building. I am, I have a lot of concern about how we're getting them into the building safely. And I don't know if we, that hasn't been part of the task force yet. Yeah, you guys have done a lot of great work, but I didn't know if we talked about busing yet.
So Tom's on the line. I mean, he's going to cover some of that. I mean, that's all stuff that we're going to have to. I'm going to ask, hey, like, how are you going to get kids on or off the bus? How are you going to get kids in the school? That's all stuff that we're working on as we look to move forward. Is there a perfect solution? At this point, there is not. We are working on that and listening to experts in regards to that. You may have seen the picture of a high school in Georgia where everyone's together. I mean, that's stuff that we're working through to try to navigate as we go into the environment, but.
Okay, so it's fair to say that, I mean, we will have, if we agree to at least go virtual, remote through October 16th, we will at least have two more board meetings to talk about, to nail down what we're going to do about buses.
Sure, the other thing to keep in mind, the guidelines that we have right now from the governor, it does reduce bus capacity. But under our hybrid models, we're also reducing the number of students who are being transported on any one given day. So mathematically, I think you can get it to work. But obviously, that's part of the challenge that we'll be getting updates on. I mean, it'll have to work somehow. We'll have to find a way to make it work.
Agreed. Yeah, no, I think that the, unless the capacity on the buses is a mandate, less students having to go to school each day certainly will make the situation better. Certainly wasn't tenable if everybody goes to school, you know, in a normal or I guess pre-COVID manner. Just, and I know we may not have that solution today. I just want to put it out there to Tom and whoever else is working on that. That's something I definitely want to hear about and making sure that we have that nailed down. Again, I think it's a lot easier to make a static classroom safe as opposed to a bus that kids, I mean, have been on a field trip, anybody catch spot? Free earplugs, and they're not, and you know, when they're not following social distancing. So that's my, that's my only, that's a more comment than a question.
I got like 50 questions, so here we go. Okay, first of all, thank you to everyone who's been a part of this planning. And to those of you who are tuning in who are like, why are we giving you all of these options? I think it's important we're going to give you all of these options so you know how much time and effort and thought went into this. We'll continue to talk about the options, select an option, and then after that, we'll keep providing you with information because that's what we do best. We clarify as we move forward. So right now, it just seems like a lot. I know it seems overwhelming even to all of us after having read it and now being presented. We got you. So hang with us, even though it seems like a lot right now. Question from a parent about the pre-K virtual learning, the kindergarten and elementary school virtual learning. Is that virtual learning six hours of screen time a day?
No.
Okay.
No, no. And we know right now, we actually met today as a curriculum instructor and assessment group. And we were even now talking about the number of hours and minutes. I mean, we know screen time, just as Dr. Bracata spoke to, is not conducive for the early learner. So we're going to talk about what that time limit will be, screen time versus the other work that they're doing.
Okay. And then about the date that we've been presented, of October 16th, what, do we have clear expectations of what might change in six weeks that are going to make us feel like we're going from virtual to remote? Or is that merely a guideline of what we think we need in order to roll out hybrid successfully? I'm sorry, I said virtual.
So I mean, I think there are several factors that come into play. One would be the planning aspect of some of these questions that you're talking about right now. We tend to have like, at a four-week point, we'll be able to take an assessment to see other places that are going to operate right out of the gate to see what they're encountering, what's going on. I have not heard anything if they're going to loosen or we're going to move to phase three or what's going to happen at that point. So I don't have any inside information in regards to that. You know, we were supposed to move to phase three on July 15th, I think, or we're looking at that and we're now in almost to August 15th and we still haven't moved to phase three. So I mean, there's some hope that we would be further along and some of this would be loosened, which makes some of these strategic things easier. There's a lot of training too that needs to be involved and I'm thankful that the board backed up the start of school till September 8th. But there's a lot of training and things that are going to have to happen as we look to move forward with our staff to make sure that virtual is the best that it possibly can be and then this hybrid model is the best possible it can be. I mean, it seems like, it's like an onion. It seems like every time we get past the surface thing, then you peel down another layer and there's more smell that comes with it that we're trying to figure out how to contain, so.
So that's why, I mean, I think between now and the next scheduled meeting, we should be holding a board workshop in between and plan for a board workshop in between this meeting in September and then between September and October, just so we have more opportunities to publicly keep people in the booth. Is that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's a good idea to end August to put out there, kind of like we did at the beginning of this, where we have that question emailing so people can ask their questions and we can try to address those here at the meeting. And to give more information as it becomes, the picture becomes clearer and clearer. I mean, I want parents to be as informed as possible.
So I have another question. So of the models presented to us, the one model shows that elementary school kids would be in cohorts of a Monday, Tuesday, building cleaning Wednesday, Thursday. But for our middle school and high school levels, we're not showing building cleaning on Wednesdays. We're showing out of school on Fridays. What's the rationale behind that and not having everybody out on Wednesdays?
I can't answer that one necessarily. I don't know, TJ, Bonnie, or Nick.
We can, we can very easily change that Friday to a Wednesday. We, we just wanted to, initially, we just gave a, the, we all decided at the secondary level to give the Friday off. But we did discuss that, that if we wanted to have cleaning in the middle, we could do that as well. Especially with the high school schedules when I said, you know, one cohort would take their A-day, B-day, Monday, Tuesday, and the second one. So that's, that's a real easy switch.
The other thing to keep in mind now, I mean, we're going to have to be flexible on this because it's obviously the day where nobody goes into the school at either elementary or middle high school. at either elementary or middle high school is, I'm gonna say probably, you know, the least important of the, they're all important, but the least important of five days. And so we know, for example, that there's gonna be an election, the first week of November, and that school buildings are gonna be closed that day. So on, on that particular day, you know, the eight people might go Monday and Wednesday, and then the others, Thursday and Friday, and Election Day, maybe we'll end up doing it virtually, I don't know. But there are days where we don't even have five days in a week. Um, so we're gonna have to, you know, some of those days are gonna shift around from time to time on kind of a practical basis.
Well, so what, as long as we didn't ask that in advance, you know, they feel like parents are gonna need to plan accordingly, especially.
And that'll, and I assume that's gonna be part of what gets, you know, more meat on the bones here. I mean, I think tonight's vote is to give, uh, the administration and staff guidance on what we think is the best course to take. And then, you know, as we have workshops and board meetings, we'll be providing more and more detail so that by the time October 19 rolls around, assuming the world hasn't gone to hell in a handbasket, um, you know, we'll be ready to start, um, the hybrid model smoothly and as easily as possible. But there's still all sorts of little details and wrinkles that'll have to get ironed out. But I think part of, you know, we're getting the big picture tonight, and then we'll pick a course, and then some of those details will start to get filled in.
Right, we need to answer when the child she gets picked up. We need to answer when, as a parent, if you select virtual for the entire year, are you committed until when? Because we know from research that online models are most successful with a dedicated timeline, so. Until when are you committing? And if you commit to already, you're no longer comfortable, what happens then? So are those things we have answers to the end of, okay. Time lines?
We have answers and we have questions. I mean, I think that as part of, as we delve deeper into this, I mean, depending on what the decision is, is we have some, you know, key events coming up, like meet the teacher. Um, we have an opening, like a ribbon cutting at a school, we have new parent orientation, we have all kinds of stuff that we need to start to get answers out about.
Are we talking about any of this in person? Are we, can we give opportunities socially distanced for kids in our lower grades to teach in person? So they have a face with the person that they're meeting on a screen for six weeks?
I can't answer that at this time. I mean, I think personally, as a teacher to have possibly twenty-two to forty-four people coming into your room, um, would be a challenge.
I was just wondering.
As long as the weather's perfect and we don't have a hurricane or tornado, or, I mean, I think that makes it a challenge.
Well, hey, look, I don't, I don't think we can necessarily, well, certainly not tonight, but even on a going forward basis, we're gonna have to be flexible here, because we saw things change. You know, we thought it was only gonna be two weeks, and we thought it was gonna be just another two weeks in April, and then, you know, before you knew it, it's the end of the school year. And I think, assuming we're able to start the hybrid model, I mean, I assume that, you know, if lightning struck and a vaccine came out tomorrow, and we could inoculate everybody, and then we knew it worked, we'd start regular classes on September 8th. Um, I don't think that's gonna happen. Um, but if we start the hybrid model and then the world starts to fall apart, we might have to go back to virtual. I don't necessarily know. I think, you know, we're trying to do the best we can in very uncertain times where the information changes on almost a day-by-day basis. So, you know, if, one of the guiding principles, though, I think we would all agree on is that, you know, if you're a, a teacher or a parent, a student, now, it's not our intent to force you to come to school. Uh, if you're not comfortable doing that, or certainly if health reasons don't allow you to do that, we're not gonna, uh, not gonna force anybody at risk to show up for in-person. And so then, they'll, and that's in the guidelines anyway. There has to be virtual options for folks, no matter what, which is part of what makes this also a challenge.
Right, although, I mean, there's lots of moving pieces, and I think it's challenging that the guidance we were given, it obviously wasn't what we expected, that the governor said he prefers for us to open in a hybrid opportunity, but it, and we need to publicly acknowledge that we haven't been even allowed into our own school buildings since March. So it's nice to want hybrid and feel like we can roll that successfully, but that's part of what, why we need the time to be virtual, because we haven't been given the opportunity. Have we been given a date where administrators are allowed in our building since?
So currently, state employees are not, are to continue to work remotely unless it's required for them to come in. So, I mean, we're gonna start on the 17th to start, come back in a day at a time, um, to start planning. But it's, that's one of the difficulties we have right now, is that state employees are not required, are not to come in till we're at phase three according to the guidance that we received, and we're still in phase two.
I just think it's important for everybody to realize that there's some of our challenges and limitations, that hybrid might be what's being said, but we're not being given all the tools to make that totally successful day one of opening. I think that's like that right now.
Is right.
Why just, I mean, we're not there yet, but, I mean, I have the same questions that I'll hand to. What's grading gonna look like for the first six weeks compared to when we go to a hybrid model? We know grading started on capacity and shifted in the spring. So I know we don't have answers for those things, but they're questions that are being asked, so. I'm forward to make sure that we do address that, so.
We'll definitely put guidance out in regards to that.
Thank you. I think that's all for now, not hearing anything else.
Uh, I just wanted to know what kinds of discussions are happening with, um, childcare options for families where all adults in the, in the, in the household are, are working full-time for the, especially for the first six weeks of remote learning? And how are the, how are these places going to help support kids doing virtual learning? Um, as well as transporting them to and from school?
So childcare facilities are at thirty percent. Um, that's another challenge with this, as you go to hyper model or whatever model that you go to. I have a call this week with all the childcare, or invited everyone, um, major childcare providers in our community to start discussing this with them, to see, uh, you know, what options are available, but they're, they're challenged, only thirty percent of the kids. So, um, most of our childcare facilities are usually filled to the max. Um, we also have before and after care programs in our, in our buildings that we're looking at. Um, and that's, that's a serious challenge at this point. Um, the governor has kinda, in his press conference last week, put it back on schools. We do have a liaison with BOE, and there's a liaison with us that's working with childcare facilities, but I don't necessarily know if there's an answer to that at this point. Kelly, like, we're definitely working through that. Um, well, and you can only be at thirty percent. It makes it a challenge, so we're gonna need, need some leeway there, and some, I mean, I'm, I don't anticipate any new childcare facilities popping up or people under the current guidelines.
No, I don't, I don't think it's the district's, you know, full responsibility in any way. It's kinda the, the hands that were being dealt, and, you know, unfortunately, there are families who have to work, and.
It's kind of the thinking of the hybrid model, like you put the Wednesday days, the virtual day for everyone, that leads families, fortunate families that have older children will be home for the virtual.
I think that's a valid.
An ideal solution, but in, for some families that I provide something.
I think that's a very good point. Um, I mean, that's one of the reasons why we have secondary starting and coming home before that childcare aspect that we know that some families rely on. So, I mean, I think the Wednesday thing is, I don't think the Friday thing is locked in stone, so I think we can work through that.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I was thinking more about families that have very young kids, all very young kids, um, that are working. Um, is, is there any, is there any, uh, support? I don't wanna talk about everything else you guys are working on. If a family were to call into the district office and say, we have to work, and our kids are, you know, first graders and younger, is there, is there anything, any resource, any, anything that can help steer them in a direction so they can get something in place before October, I mean, September 8?
I mean, the Y MCA has reached out to us to offer childcare. Um, we're those, I mean, first for teachers and then for other students that they can take in. I mean, that's an option that's out there at this point. Um, I haven't had the opportunity to talk to the other childcare providers in our community, and then we just had to have some preliminary conversations with them, but hopefully I get a few answers to that when I talk to them this week, and, uh, so they can kinda know what we're planning, and so they can kinda plan with that too.
Okay.
Well, will we, are virtual, with our staff, is it, are they virtual as well? Or would maybe teaching from classrooms, getting ready for hybrid, or is that gonna be gradual? Or is that uncertain at this time? It's okay.
If I have to answer that question tonight, I would say that, uh, we're going to make, we're gonna encourage staff to come in. Um, we're not gonna require them to come in, but we'd like them to start picking the transition as we look to go to go to hybrid, realizing that hybrid that unless, um, you know, you have an EDA or a reason that you can't come in, that we're gonna need you to come in. So, I, so we'd like people to start getting used to coming in. Um, and that's where we're working on some childcare options too as well with, where we possibly can.
I know, I mean, we've heard some people and teachers and families have those types of issues lately. Like, people who want to be there tomorrow, and people who don't want to be back at all. People who want to be there tomorrow, or we're gonna give them access to the buildings when we can? Like, that's your standard?
Yeah, as long as they can, um, we can practice social distancing and things like that, we'll give them access to the buildings.
Right, and then one more question that I forgot to ask, for masks for, um, the upper grades. I know it's not a requirement, but we have teachers of the upper grades asking what we as a district are gonna have different policies and, uh, suggested guidelines.
I think some of that's safety, um, that's involved in that, so. Um, Tom's on, I'm, Yvonne, our nurse, is on here, um, who's our lead nurse. I don't know if she would be able to answer that better than I can at this point.
I'm probably looking at you, because you're the one I can see.
Yvonne, can you hear us?
I can, hi. So the masks that are recommended by the state levels for the fourth grade and over, but we're gonna hope that the majority of our students are gonna be able to wear those masks. And we're currently working on guidelines, and we have masks available. And I was gonna talk about that later in my presentation about the health and wellness strategies that we're putting into place. So I don't know if that helps or answers your question, Michelle?
It does, I just, we can go on with the presentations, and I can save the rest of my questions.
Well, before we do that, Mark, I think you had a question.
No, as, as far as the plan, I, for what I take from tonight, it's, basically, it's how many students are gonna come, how many teachers are gonna be here, the faculty can be in the buildings, and we'll be bus drivers. I mean, I think everything you put forward tonight is ambitious. Uh, it, it's a great amount of work that's going into this. Uh, I agree with him, but I think we need to have another meeting moving forward. I think without those four components, I just don't have a plan.
I think we're gonna need to have a decision tonight of how are we moving forward?
But how do, but how do you move forward with a plan about now, how many teachers, students, faculty, you have to make the hiring work? If you have thirty percent of the workforce not gonna be here, then that's gonna limit the amount of hybrids you can do. And then if you're gonna have thirty percent of your staff here or fifty percent of students, and you lose sixty percent of your bus drivers, I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to diminish our plan, I'm just trying to say whatever to me, you know, it's.
It's kind of like a chicken and egg that we, you could go with, like, you could argue the other way. We need to have a plan to figure out who's gonna come into those things.
Do you make a plan to move this guy?
Well, but first thing, we, you're, you're right, I'm just. I mean, I, I, I think the part of the answer is, figure out what plan we want, and then we staff it. And however we have, whatever we have to do to staff it, we'll staff it. But if the plan is to have kids come in two days a week and not come in three days a week, that's one direction. We could go to a mob or have the kids come in in the morning and have the kids come in in the afternoon. That would be staffed differently. So I think the first thing we need to decide tonight is to give direction to staff and administration and teachers, this is the direction we think we'd like to go. And then I think the next step, you know, there's a lot of details. We've talked about all sorts of questions and little fine wrinkles that have to be ironed out. Those will get ironed out, I think, until we give them more general direction. I think, you know, I mean, there are a whole bunch of options in this presentation, and there's no point in figuring out, you know, answering every wrinkle and every option, because a part of that would be wasted work. So I'm not surprised we still have some questions tonight. I don't think anybody should have expected us to have all the answers. Um, and even tonight, I think some questions have been raised that have been good questions that perhaps, uh, hadn't been thought of or anticipated. It's just, we're all in new territory here, trying to figure this out. But I think we give direction to the administration tonight, and then if we come back in two weeks with a special workshop, so we can get at least some answers and ask some more questions and start to see more details. Then we have our regular board meeting in September. I, I think that's the best path forward.
You want to, and, and you're right, what I was trying to say to them is, is, is allow them to come back with a plan they can make happen. Instead of us saying, you're gonna go two days a week, let them filter out what they have to look at.
I think, but I think I heard there were some recommendations among the options. And I think, I think we're gonna be asked to approve those recommendations so they can then move forward and kind of flesh them out.
So let them figure out whether they can make work, that's what I understand what you're saying. Just, I don't wanna see them waste three weeks on a plan that we're gonna go tonight. And then all of a sudden, the burrows and the teams are gonna come back and say, you can't be in this car, you can't make this car.
Are you saying remote, removing the start, but not three weeks?
Yes, I'm saying start remotely, but then we have to allow them the latitude to come back and say, hey, this is the cardinal delta, this is what we can do, this is how we can make it work.
Right, I trust that if we, you know, follow either the recommendations they're making, we say, no, we like this option better, that if in the next two days they discover that it won't work, they'll.
I'm just trying to say, let's not box them in, let's work. I agree, same thing, we're trying. I just don't wanna commit to one if you don't want to.
All right, shall we, uh,
More.
Move on to the rest of the presentation?
I mean, and these people have done a lot of work, um, in regards to this. And you guys have had an opportunity to see this. Do you want them to continue, or do you want us to present this at a later time, or?
No, I don't think we're really here to talk about this, I'm sorry.
Well, do we, I mean, I, I have a couple of questions. Take this off. Um, you gave us a lot of options, can you at least tell us until you back them in?
Yeah, that's, I, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear at the beginning. So what I'm recommending is the, uh.
And you may have been, I just.
No, 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 I.
Forgot and lost it.
So, in reality, what we're recommending is the first six weeks of, of virtual, and then move the hybrid on the 19th. And then the, the hybrid model that we would move to, um, would be at the elementary level, would be what they mentioned as option A.
Mm-hmm.
And then at the middle and high school level, since they had.
Wait, can you just say, we're giving public what option A is? Cause I just mean, it says virtual.
The fifty-fifty cohorts. Two cohorts.
And then on the middle school, you're looking at option B, which was the two, three cohorts, but two were in for two days, and then they were virtual for the other three, and then two were in for the other two days, and they were virtual for the other three, and then the third cohort was virtual the whole time.
And I think if you go back to the very beginning, I, I mean, I've got it on my iPad, so it's easy for me to scroll. These are in the very first slides that Matt presented to us. I'll say what his recommendations are, right?
Yes, correct.
So I, they're not numbered, so I can't tell you what to.
It's slide nine, I'm six.
Oh, yeah, there they are.
There they are.
Glasses. So I think that those are the recommendations. One thing, though, I do wanna make clear too, I mean, I know we talk about dividing up the one cohort into three cohorts with kids who, some kids who only come virtually, but that's optional. I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna exclude any kid who wants to come in.
Correct.
Nor are we gonna make. Nor are we going to make any. Kid, I said kid, but any parent who doesn't want to send their kid. We're not going to force. Parents to send their children. We're not going to say to children, no, you want to come in, but we're not letting you come in.
Correct. Anyone that wants to come in, we're going to have an option for them to come in in this model.
Unless they're sick and then they have to stay.
So there's kind of a timeline we're having people commit to so we can make the cohorts.
There will be a, a timeline that we have people commit to. We have to have that in order to create the cohorts and make sure the cohorts run smoothly.
Are we going to say what that is?
We will, yes. I mean, there's some. There's some work to be done on the cohorts for simple fact, we did the survey with very general. So the next thing would come directly from the building so they can start to find his point. So you can start scheduling high school ones in these cohorts, the middle school in the cohorts, and then we know what's going on at elementary. We also would have to need to know specifically who's willing to drive your student, who's willing not to drive your student.
I think that question was hard on the survey if you didn't know that high school didn't start on line thirteen.
Absolutely.
So now that might change some people's opinion on how they answer those questions and if you didn't know what days you were looking at driving. So, you know, my work schedule might be, I work on a Tuesdays. My, so I could drive my kid on Thursdays and Fridays, but. I didn't know. I'm not saying everyone's in that situation, but the more information parents have, they're saying us, too.
Yeah, absolutely. And so. We're going to have to know student by student who's willing to come in, who's not, who's going to be driven, who's not going to be driven. Have more information out. It was hard to vote for hybrid when you didn't know what the hybrid model was. And so I, I recognize that. So now that we have more detail towards it. We need to know who these students are because you may not be talking about cohorts, A, B, D, you may be talking about. One cohort and the rest are virtual, like we don't know. And we don't know what it's going to look for exactly, how come the parents are going to be there. The piece of data that was most telling is that we do know that about seventy five, eighty percent of parents are not going to return their kid if one kid tests positive COVID. So.
If one student in a school tests positive for COVID. Then seventy five percent of the parents say, then I'm not sending my kid back to that school period.
Around that, correct, correct.
Understand the question?
They didn't say for how long, they didn't say for.
Well, the data, you can get the questions of would you go remote or would you go? I mean, would you go virtual or would you go hybrid? And that was split, right, pretty much. But then the responses from the parents who said yes to hybrid. Quickly declined returning their kids if there was positive test on the bus, positive test in school, or positive test at class.
Correct.
So then it puts the question of we're planning, if you're planning for hybrid, who are you actually looking for?
Correct.
So just, Mr. President, I, I suggest, I mean, I think that at this point, it's to your point, we're not going to resolve all the minutia right now. To your point, though, I think that we should decide on. You know, what are the, the different options that we have, option A, B, et cetera, the different options that we have, which options that we plan to um. Will plan, what options we would like to use. So unless you think we need additional discussion, I'd like to.
I just have one more question before.
Okay, well, I was going to say, so unless you think we need to.
It'd be like, I couldn't. One more question. It's an old time.
If we go forward with some more clarification please. Can we consider for the board workshop that we offer a timeframe for each level so parents can tune in? Or grade level specifics? That's just a question.
I mean, do you, I mean, you would like to do a workshop for K to five and then a workshop for, for six to twelve?
Yeah, because I think when you hear all of this, you're kind of like, wait a second.
Well, so a couple, a couple, I mean, I'll make a couple of suggestions for the workshop, but we can talk about that next. I mean, I'd like to see a little bit more, like. I think it would be helpful if we had a, a week count, like a week long calendar, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then it showed under the hybrid plan. You know, if your kid's in cohort A, these are the days you're in school.
I just wanted to be as clear as we can for parents. Who, and parents who don't have an education speak.
Right. Well, no, and that's, my point is if we show, you know, a, a Monday through Friday calendar, this is when your kid's in school, this is when he's not. Sort of thing, I think that would be helpful because it's hard to visualize it right now, but first things first, and so charts sound like you wanted to make a motion. If we look on pages seven, eight, and nine of the presentation. Those are the pages, as I understand it, Matt, Dr. Burroughs, that, that, those are the pages that contain the hybrid model that you are recommending. And then you're also recommending that we start on a fully remote basis. For, through, starting September eighth. We'd start the hybrid on October nineteenth.
Is this hybrid model then going right now until the end of the year? Is that what we're voting for? Are we voting for a date to reevaluate that?
I mean.
I know the situation is changing, we don't have an answer on this. On Stan's way plan.
I mean, we have a. So I think, I mean, I think if we continue to look at this as six to nine week chunks. Then we can continue to evaluate. We don't know, but you know, you enter phase three, what's going to happen. We've created the hybrid, the virtual and hybrid plan so you can transition right into. Full day as well, so. We're ready for that.
But it's also so we can transition back to virtual.
Right, back to virtual. I mean, that's why you see these times, you see the. It's, you know. None of it's ideal, none of it's like we anticipated last September, we're going to return to school this September, but.
I don't think anybody anticipated this in May.
Right, I agree.
Or June.
So I, I think that we'll continue to evaluate, we'll continue to inform. I mean, as, as the changes, you're going to see. I'm an optimist, so let's say we all get back and it all goes smoothly and we can slowly build into more and more time in the class. And then we're back to what we consider to be normal in some aspect. But we're still going to have to have a virtual option. Because you're still going to have people that do not feel safe saying with kids and we're making that commitment to them that they still have a virtual option, so.
Okay, I just wanted to know what we thought about.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I think to, to that point, we're just not going to know time. I'm just going to listen to the, in my view, listen to the science. So, Mr. President, I make a motion that we follow the superintendent's. Recommendation of starting school remotely, September eighth through October nineteenth. And after October nineteenth, we follow the, the hybrid plan outline on slides seven, eight, and nine. That sufficient or maybe go into more detail?
Uh, I think that's sufficient. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to start the school year remotely on September eighth. Uh, and then starting on October nineteenth. We would use the, or we would plan to use the hybrid model shown on page six, seven. I'm sorry, seven, eight, and nine of the PDF presentation. Obviously, you know, we still have a lot of flexibility and can change our mind as circumstances develop, but for now, that's the motion. Remotely starting September eighth, going to a hybrid model, the shown on pages seven, eight, and nine, starting October nineteenth. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion?
Yeah, if we don't feel comfortable in the middle of September, that moving forward with hybrid in October is a good idea anymore? Are we reevaluating that as?
Absolutely.
Okay, just wanted to publicly say that in case.
I mean, as, as Matt, I think, has made clear, I mean, we're trying to be flexible here. World could change in any number of ways between now, October nineteenth. Mr. Abrams.
I'm here. Um.
Ms. Ray.
This presentation going to be available to families with the disclaimer that. Could change, but in order to kind of. If you're a visual learner and you need to see these charts to understand what we're talking about here, if you need to start, you know, kind of getting some ideas. Planning for your families and so on. Will that be available?
This will be available, it's on board docs, it's also on our webpage, but we're also going to put a communication out to parents this week as well, just kind of outlining some of this in bullet, bullet points. And then as we continue to develop. Board workshops to have this community questions answered. We'll also start to, as we were in. Our. Beginning in March where we communicate every week, the parents, we're going to start that back up to communicate every week to parents so they kind of know what's coming and. What, what the thoughts are at this point to try to answer some questions. I do encourage parents to read those weekly communication pieces, though, because. Sometimes I get a lot of questions that are, that were in those weekly communication pieces.
And what this presentation, though, is, I think, is slightly different than what's on board docs.
Correct, it's an updated presentation.
So.
This will be the presentation that's on.
And my suggestion, too, would be if you're going to put information up on board docs, but also on our webpage or on Facebook. I would just. Put these three slides out there because, I mean, there's a lot of other information, we've talked about a lot of it, but if, you know, if you weren't. You weren't here, but here are our motion, you might look at it and not realize, oh, this is what they did on pages seven, eight, and nine. So I would. Whenever we put up on social media, on the internet. You need to be clear that it was the first that we agreed to. And in fact, I would be inclined to. Cut as much of the rest of it. The actions that we decided not to pursue just to avoid confusion.
I'm making a comment that people don't have much work put into it, but I'm like, yeah.
If people, if people don't appreciate the work that went into this, they're.
I, I agree with you. I do like, I do like these, too, because they go along with the bulleted points. You know, I think that that's, these are very good.
And are we going to have a dedicated email address for feedback like we've done in the past, or should people use which email address?
I mean, we'll continue to put that email address, which is ASB.
This is, I can whatever.
Yeah, or.
Well, and I, and as we always do, I mean, to the extent that parents, teachers, other members of the community, students. And email us. I mean, I actually found it was very helpful to get the emails that we got leading up to this meeting and so.
And I feel like we should say we normally have a twenty four hour response window between the five of us, but the amount of volume that we've got over the last couple of days.
Yeah.
And we have read everything, but we have not responded to that.
Well, and a lot of, a lot of emails, to be fair, didn't call for a response, but people were giving us their feedback, which is.
We're usually pretty good about getting.
If you can ask specific questions, we didn't leave the back.
And, and, and to be clear, all of our email addresses are listed on the district website, so, you know, it, it is helpful for all of us to get an email. As opposed to just sending your thoughts to, to one or two of us, you know. You know, with us sharing that, it's just easier if you, if you email all five of us.
Well, and also copy Dr. Burroughs to email. Or email the five of us and include Dr. Burroughs as well, just so we're all in a loop to start with, and that just speeds up. Response time or action time if that happens. But again. It's very helpful to hear from people and, and so we encourage you to do that because that's what we're here for.
So the rest of the presentation really gets into the curriculum and stuff that we're looking at and then also talks about some of the safety. Measures that we're looking at as we look at the safe environment and as we move forward. But we can present that at the board workshop.
We didn't.
We had questions, comments, and discussion on the motion. Any further questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a monthly financial report for June twenty twenty four approval. Mr. Loftus, are you still with us somewhere in cyberspace?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, thank you.
Uh, so the June monthly revenue and expenditure report was reviewed by the Financial Advisory Committee. Uh, last night, August the tenth. And the committee recommends approval of that report at this time.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the monthly financial report for June as presented.
Second. Motion by Ms. Wall, second by Mr. Abrams to approve the monthly financial report for June twenty twenty as presented and as recommended by the Financial Advisory Committee. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have the internal accounts report for May twenty twenty and June twenty twenty for approval, Mr. Loftus.
So the Financial Advisory Committee also reviewed the May and June internal account reports. And they recommended approval of those reports at this time.
Mr. President, I make a motion for the internal accounts reports for May and June of twenty twenty to be approved as presented.
Motion by Ms. Wall, second by Mr. Abrams to, to approve the internal accounts reports for May twenty twenty and June twenty twenty as presented and as recommended by the Financial Advisory Committee. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the financial position report, Mr. Loftus.
So the last item I have for you tonight is the financial position report was submitted to. To you all and the Financial Advisory Committee reviewed that report last night. And recommended approval of that report as well as there's some signatures that are needed on that report. And this is a report required by. Office of Management and Budget to just let them know that we're going to make it through the first portion of the year. Until we get our tax returns, the bulk of our property tax receipts in October.
Right, a- a- as I understand it, and for those tuning in for the first time. Certain, at certain points during the course of the year, we have to certify to the state that we have enough funds to make payroll in case. Uh, property tax revenue collection is slow. It, it's more of a cash flow issue, but the state wants to make sure we've got the money to pay our teachers and pay our staff. And so we get, you know, we, is why we pay attention to the finances. But we get this report and Eric, as I read this, that we need to have a minimum of two point seven million and change. In order to be able to certify, but it looks like you're saying we've got six point one million. So we're well above the minimum threshold. Am I reading that correctly?
You are reading that correctly, which means that we're not touching the four point five million dollar reserve accounts. And we're benefited by a number of state appropriations like equalization and things like that. That help us along with our carryover funds make it through the first couple of months of the year until we. Like I mentioned, until we receive our property tax revenue.
Right. Okay, so with that clarification, the chair will entertain, or the explanation, the chair will entertain a motion. Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the financial position report as presented. Motion by Mr. Abrams, second by Ms. Wall to approve the financial position report as presented. Does the Financial Advisory Committee review this?
They absolutely do. They absolutely reviewed it and recommended approval.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So. The motion is to approve the financial position report as presented and as recommended by the Financial Advisory Committee. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have the educational specifications for the Summit Campus Elementary School for approval.
Yes, we have the educational specification for approval and here to present that tonight is Maureen Rosansky from Buck Semper and Associates.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully you can see me. It's a little darker here. Can everybody hear me? Okay.
We can see it.
Okay, great. Um, well, good evening. Thank you for, for allowing me to present the educational specifications. This is for the new Summit Elementary School, um, which is to be an eight hundred forty student, um, grades one through five elementary school. Unique about this is it'll be the first building on the new Summit Campus, which will. Again, in, in the, in the full future will be a full K to twelve campus, similar to what we're finishing up at Fairview. For the educational specifications, as we have with other facilities, really it's that initial programming, the discussions that we have. The efforts along with all of the staff and administration and teachers coming together and really talking through the needs, program needs, building needs. To support the new facility. So we had those discussions and the educational specifications are a result of that. You know, that effort is to, certainly, we want to make sure we continue what works well, but we also want to make sure that if something needs to be adjusted. but we also want to make sure that if something needs to be adjusted, um, you know, and improved, um, based on different programs or different needs, you know, we address that. So, um, these have incorporated all of those, um, comments. And I also want to note, you know, it's important to say, we're not reinventing the wheel. Um, we really, as we led all the discussions, it was using Lorwood Grove, um, as the most recent elementary school, and also those, um, recently newly constructed Old State Elementary, really as the basis of discussion and a basis of, um, those program elements moving forward. So with that, again, the culmination of all of those efforts over the last few months have been, um, the educational specifications, which, um, we're, we're submitting for your, you know, review and approval. So with that, I don't know if you have any questions or concerns?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the educational specifications for the Summit Campus Elementary School for approval as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Wall, second by Ms. Edlin, to approve the educational specifications for Summit Campus Elementary School as presented. Questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? I'll just say what I think I said last month again. I mean, um, I do hope, and I do want this elementary school at this site to, as much as possible, incorporate, uh, design elements from our existing elementary school, either Biker Hill or Spring, uh, or, or Old State. Um, because, you know, unlike Lorwood Grove, which had to be designed to a very specific property that was kind of irregularly shaped and were designed, if, you know, uh, approvals needed in that community. Here we've got a nice flat piece of ground, it's wide open. I mean, we could almost take one of those system building designs and, and plop it right down at Summit Bridge. But obviously, you know, we want to make refinements because we may have found things that didn't work at one of those schools or things we changed based on experience since those schools were constructed. But, you know, we're always hearing, uh, from folks, why don't they build all the schools the same? And why don't they try to build all the schools as, the same as much as possible? And ordinarily, with differing site conditions and hopes of other factors, it doesn't make sense. But here, I think it does make sense to try to do that. That I don't think is affected by our vote tonight, because we're just approving the specifications. But I, I continue to hope that, that that will be the case as we do the design going forward. So unless other, anybody else has any questions, comments, or discussion, uh, I will call it for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have construction contracts for approval. Keith, are you still there?
I am, yeah. Tonight, we have, um, for approval, Brick Mill Early Childhood Center, the early contracts for site work and, and related trades. With that, we're seeking the board's approval upon the recommendations submitted.
These contracts are based on the bids, they've been prepared and, and finalized by our, uh, our lawyers, and they say they're ready for us to approve, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so. I'm sorry.
It's a forty thousand square feet.
It's based on a forty thousand square foot building.
I make a motion to approve the construction contracts as presented, approval of the forty thousand square feet.
Need a second.
A second.
Uh, motion to approve the construction contracts, uh, as presented and as recommended. Motion by Mr. Abrams, second by Ms. Wall. Any further questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda, change orders for approval. Keith. Unless we're, are we gonna let Bob do it? Yes.
Was this Bob's last motion?
Bob's last report, okay. We're having a workshop, we're, we're having a workshop, Bob, so.
Next slide.
So, uh, as you can see, this is a little larger change order list than, uh, we've seen previously at Fairview, which is not unusual at this end of the job, everybody's trying to clean up all their contracts. And, you know, we're bugging people to get their stuff in. A couple of highlights are in the, uh, unrequested items. Um, we are purchasing, um, pre-engineered and constructed sheds uh, to be placed throughout the, uh, sports complex. Now, one of them is large enough that we're gonna have to pull a permit, and they will come out there and erect it on site. We sort of have a pretty hefty credit there. Part of the, uh, VCT floor contractor's contract was they, um, cleaning, waxing the floors, but we never allow that. Our, um, our custodial, uh, staff never likes the job that we get out of that. So we just took a credit from that, and our staff's been over there for about the last three, four months, uh, cleaning and waxing floors. Um, also, to go along with the sod fields, uh, we purchased water wheels, which you would have gotten anyway, but, uh, we ran these through the sod contractor. And then the sod itself to sod fields five and six for what we had anticipated as fall sports, but since that time, that's, uh, that's, that's not gonna happen. And then, um, the De-tronic sign, which will be mounted on the wall, coming in at the, uh, at the, uh, traffic circle at the front of the school. So somewhat similar to the sod sign that you see at, uh, the, uh, Happy Clutter Bumper Hill campus over there. And then that'll be mounted right on the front there. And then, you know, field conditions, as I said, just everybody's out there cleaning up, you know, their change orders that they've been, uh, that field conditions working on. And then, um, you know, we've had some design related, uh, change orders as well. Same thing, they're design related, but at the end of the job, these were all performed by contractors there, and they're, uh, getting these in now to get their contracts speed up and their final payments. So, you have any questions about any specific ones with this? Try to answer.
Any questions from Mr. Hershey? Okay, well, hearing none, the chair will entertain the motion.
I make a motion to approve the change orders as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Abrams, second by Ms. Edlin, to approve the change orders as presented and as recommended. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hershey.
Keith has so.
Yeah, I, we have some change orders for Silver Lake. We have some unrequested change orders to expand the size of the gym and the facade of the gym. We took it back to the original contract bid, uh, uh, or on our first go-round of the bid. So those, those change orders reflect that as far as the size of the, the facade being the largest one with the ad, the masonry. The second largest would have been, you know, the, uh, the painting.
Well, I think we made a motion for Fairview, and now we're gonna make a motion for Silver Lake, so.
I think, uh, Mr. President, I make a motion for the change orders to be approved for Silver Lake Elementary.
Motion by Ms. Wall, second by Mr. Abrams, to approve the change orders for Silver Lake as presented and as recommended. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Keith. Next on the agenda, we have the personnel report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, tonight, the, uh, August Personnel Report has been submitted for your review, and we are asking for approval as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Abrams, second by Ms. Wright, to approve the Personnel Report as presented. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda, established meeting dates. Our next regularly scheduled date will be Tuesday, September eighth, first day of school. Um, but we will discuss, and in all likelihood, we'll be scheduling a board workshop, uh, to get continued information, updates, feedbacks, tweaks, et cetera, on the hybrid, uh, direction that we voted on tonight. And that'll probably be the last week of August is.
I just have another question. Is it possible for us to also have that workshop? I mean, it's not, but tools or something for parents to talk to their kids who are gonna have disappointment about this not being a normal back-to-school, like the mental health component of we're still at home? Um, even if we feel like as a community, that's the safest option right now. Is there a way for, or even to encourage educators, or, but I think more of a problem right now is, how do we tell parents, how to tell their kids about this? How do we, I mean, this is usually the time you're about to be back after, like, appreciated, your junior, what, whatever. All of them are normal.
Well, I don't know that we need to wait till the workshop to have.
Okay, is there a way, okay, then is there a way for us to be making sure we're providing that?
Let me see, is Dr. Gerdo on the? Dr. Gerdo, did you hear the question?
Matt, Ed may have jumped off the call, but he is ready to go, and he even had a slide prepared for tonight. So he'll be prepared for that at the board workshop.
Can that be shared then?
But we can also send that out in our weekly newsletter like he did before, like, and stuff like that, correct?
Absolutely. Like I said, he's ready to go with information.
This is just a lot of information for families to digest. And I know that I'm a believer in the more we can provide, the better. Our information can be ignored, but if we're at least providing it, then we're, are giving parents an app they would like it. So I'm sorry, that was out of, that's, I know, it's on the faculty page.
No, not a problem. Good observation.
Thank you.
Um, so then, with that, again, our next, uh, regularly scheduled board meeting, must-see TV, is Tuesday, September eighth at seven o'clock. We'll be coming to you live on YouTube. Look for announcement on a workshop to be held, most likely the last week of August. But we've got to coordinate schedules and make sure there's a time and a place and all that sort of good stuff. And, and at that special workshop, it'll be an agenda, but we anticipate talking about the hybrid model in our detail. So with that, thank you all for attending. Thank you all for attending on YouTube, and we are adjourned.